One second there, I'm just gonna push that little button and we're gonna wait four seconds and then everybody's gonna come in. They all come in now.
Alrighty. Wait till everybody has entered our room. And look at us on time. Hello, Mr. Darty. Uh, okay, you guys all ready? Everyone here? Okay, Seth, do you think we're good?
You are good to go. You are good. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. This is the meeting of the Town of Citewatt Select Board. It is now 6:31 PM and I would like to ask the board for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Vignani and seconded by Ms. Curran. We will go through the governor's protocol after accepting the agenda. But we must have all votes conducted by roll call this evening. So we have a motion and a second to accept the agenda.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
She said yes.
Okay, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the agenda's been accepted. I will alert everyone that in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and the Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12th, 2020, the Town of Citewatt Public Meetings will, shall be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on Citewatt Community Television Facebook Live. The recorded meeting will be available next tomorrow on Comcast Channel 9 and the YouTube Citewatt Community Television Station. As we go through the proceedings this evening, if there is a portion that is open to public comment, we would ask that you use the reactions button and raise hand or you can put your video on and physically wave. We should be able to see you and we will monitor it that way. And with that, the only thing I would like to add before we launch into the meeting is that the pure, well, sorry, this is dating myself. The Harbor Community Building, Harbor Community, oh, get to a second. A Harbor Community Building Survey, formerly known as Pier 44, is still live for another week. And we encourage residents, take a look at, let us know what you think is the right use for that site and that building. And you can find that info, the link to that survey on the town website. And so with that, I do, I assume that WATT waived to inform us that they're recording. Right, which is following protocol. So just so folks know, you are certainly entitled to record a public meeting, but we asked that you let us know. Oh, wait, he needed something.
Permission.
You do have permission, sir. Great, thank you for alerting us. And the same goes for anyone if they would like to do so. No point, honestly, because it's gonna be on the video. It's the videos available tomorrow. So with that, I will see if there are any zoom-ins or walk-ins before we go to the town administrator's report. As I said, you can raise your hand or just take your video off. I'm gonna scroll through. Yes, WATT, you do have permission to record. Oh, okay. I don't know what you're saying.
Unmute him.
Seth, would you mind unmuting him for just a second?
Yes, yes, yes. David, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so I'm hitting the record button on Zoom and it's saying, please ask the host to give you permission to record. So I'm recording differently this night.
Are there any objections to them recording? Nope. Seth, Magic Man, go ahead.
It's not allowing me to.
Well, that is correct, because I take that out of that. David, I can send you the link after we're done. It's live on Facebook too, soon as this is done.
So I can't record it off Zoom tonight?
For currently, no, I cannot. I would have to end the meeting to go back into my account.
Okay, all right. Thanks anyway.
All right. Sorry for the inconvenience.
That's all right.
I do see one raised hand. Alan, if you would like to, Seth, would you invite Alan to join us?
She should be good.
It still says muted on my little thing.
Alan, if you want to unmute yourself, if you do not know how.
There you go. That, hi. Name and address for the record, please.
It's Ellen Casper, 120 Gilson Road. And I just wanted to use the walk-in to bring up something other than what's normally brought up during the wind turbine discussions. I'm really concerned that the wind turbine discussions have been restricted and controlled. And we haven't really been allowed to speak fully or to have any experts speak on our behalf. We've been unable to get the town to address or investigate the improprieties that we've uncovered surrounding the Epsilon selection, the testing protocols, nor have you allowed a peer review of the questionable results. We have continually requested and not been provided with a specific language. The town claims that exempt Citewatt Wind LLC from adhering to state and local nuisance laws and from Citewatt Board of Selectmen Board of Health from using its power to declare the industrial wind type turbine a nuisance. The press and the public continue to be fed misinformation. And we just found out tonight that even some of the board minutes are incomplete and incorrect. And this is all just meant that the town has been able to ignore their responsibility to protect its citizens over Citewatt LLC. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen, for your comments. The board will take that under advisement. Are there any other walk-ins? I don't see any. With that, I believe the next item on our agenda is the report of the town administrator. Mr. Bedrow?
Good evening. We're gonna start with the vaccination update. We are now in phase two, step two of the vaccination schedule. That means residents 65 and over are residents with two or more comorbidities are now eligible to sign up for vaccinations. Comorbidity is an existing health condition that COVID-19 exacerbates. You can find the list of those comorbidities on the state website. It is self attestation, so there is no proof. You don't need a doctor's note, but you will be required to sign under the pains and penalties of perjury that you have two or more comorbidities. That can be signed up again through the state website, mass.gov. COVID-19, a COVID vaccine map, we can interact with the vaccine map site to sign up. Marshfield Fairgrounds are open. They are receiving vaccines. That is available to Plymouth County residents only. They post as they get more vaccine available. The mass vaccination sites post on Thursdays. So Gillette, Fenway Park, and the other max vaccination sites post on Thursdays for the upcoming week. Last week, we had a small clinic here in Citewatt. We did about 100 shots down at the Harbor Community Center. After that clinic was over, the state announced that cities and towns would no longer be getting doses of the vaccine for us to administer. That is gonna be reserved for the larger sites. We don't agree with that, obviously, but we understand why the state's doing it. Those people who were vaccinated at our clinic, we will receive the second doses for them. So they will still be able to get the second dose from us. We will get that around the day of when you do, your appointments will be honored. But you need to now go to the state website to make an appointment at one of the other vaccination centers, because we will not be getting any additional vaccine, at least in the foreseeable future, to do our own clinic. If you can't get an appointment, if you can't get through, if you're having problems, I know everybody's having problems. 211 is the state number. All the Citewatt Council on Aging is 717815458722. We can help you get an appointment or get into the system. The other thing I just wanna let people know is they're allowing what they call companion shots for people who cannot get to get a vaccine. You can have a companion take you. Companion shots are only available at the mass vaccination sites. So you cannot get a companion shot at Marshfield Fairgrounds. You have to go to Gillette or Fenway Park to get the companion vaccination. So we are moving forward. Johnson, Johnson is up this week for approval. According to the news, they'll have 20 million doses ready to ship. I'll be shipped by mid-March, which will be good. That really is the big difference. It requires no special handling and it only requires one shot. So we don't have to worry about vaccinating people again. So we're hoping that comes out soon and maybe the state will change their mind and allow us to go back to having individual clinics for our residents. Since last Monday, we had 32 new cases in Citewatt. That's up from 28 the week before. It is still significantly lower than the January, February numbers we had been seeing. It is trending in the right direction. We're in the yellow on the state COVID map with a positivity rating over the last 14 days of 2.98%, and that was down from 3.63% of the previous week. The state's two-week positivity rating was down to 2.7, down from 3.4 of the previous week. So our numbers are moving in the right direction. People need to continue to be vigilant. Even if you've been vaccinated, you are still required to wear your mask. The mask mandate is not lifted just because you've been vaccinated. So you need to still wear your mask. People need to still wash their hands and be safe. We want to remind people who might have traveled from school vacation, upon returning to the Commonwealth, you are required to follow the Commonwealth's travel protocols. You either must quarantine for 10 days upon return or produce a negative PCR test result that has been administered up to 72 hours prior to your arrival in the Commonwealth. You also have to go to the state website and fill out the mass travel form upon your return. There are three low-risk states that you can travel to and not be required to quarantine upon your return. They are Hawaii, North Dakota, and Puerto Rico. But if you go to Hawaii, you have to quarantine for 14 days when you go there. So I don't think you went on school vacation and came back. It would have been a pretty, pretty bad trip staying in your hotel room the whole time. Again, town hall is open. The library is back open. The hours are on the town website. We are open for business. People are allowed to come in. We do follow the COVID protocols. But if you have business at the town hall, we're open normal business hours. Come on in and see us. Last week, beach stickers went on sale. We had a line of probably 50, 60 people out the door when we opened at 8:30 for beach stickers. At this point, non-resident beach stickers and non-resident Hammerock Beach stickers are all sold out. They sold out in less than two hours, but residents can still get their beach stickers. The easiest way to do it is go online. It's a pretty simple process. And as soon as they get your application, they'll mail you the beach sticker. One other thing I want to do, Karen mentioned the online survey, but I do want to thank the DPW for their work last week. I know it didn't seem like much of a snowstorm, but it kept snowing and snowing and snowing. And then when the snow stopped, it changed to ice. So they started at 6:30 on Thursday morning and there were members of the department here until 2:00 AM on Friday night, Saturday morning, saw things standing and plowing. That's almost 48 hours of straight work that they had to do. We don't see it. You don't notice it. You only notice when they don't do it. They were back out again this morning at 3 o'clock because we had black ice issues around town. So I want to thank those guys for all they do. It makes a big difference. Again, usually don't see it, because by the time you get up, the black ice is gone, the snow is gone. But they really put in a lot of work the last couple of days on snow and ice removal. Our project's continuing down at Cedar Point. We expect the barge down at the harbor. Coal Parkway this week to stop putting those pilings in and get that project underway to be completed for voting season. That's what I have for right now.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bedrow. Appreciate that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump on our clerk's correspondence report a little bit, just to mention that there is a letter from, sorry Karen, there is a letter from the Cedar Point Association that commending both the contractor and, and the town for their supervising of that project, which is very complicated. So just while we have actual people with us, I wanted to just give a shout out on that. Thanks, Jim, for that. Any questions for our town administrator from the board? Any comments? Mr. Good, Mr. Goodrich?
Just real quick, the, any, how well is the survey doing overall?
As of yesterday, we're up around 900, Andrew. That's great.
Any other questions or comments for Jim? Okay, seeing none. Our first item on the agenda is to discuss vote renaming of Central Field after Ann Palmer. And we do have Sheila McCourt from REC. But before we start with that, and I see John Sullivan, this Palmer's brother, we, in, in preparing for the meeting, it became abundantly clear that, that this application falls in the gray area where the board has not kept up our list of memorial and donation procedures and what's available. We have an agenda item later in the evening, which is from the original list of here's things that are available. And absolutely no reflection on the application or Ms. Palmer, because, you know, obviously, this is an important, important conversation, is we have decided that we need to postpone the actual vote on this until we get, I mean, for lack of better words, we need to get our ducks in a row and make sure that, you know, we have procedures and policies in place that can affect any kind of naming of things. Case in point, there have been twice in the past two fields named twice. And that just shows that we need to just get these things in place so that we do it correctly. However, I did explain this to the family and, and, and I wanted to stress, this has nothing to do with Mrs. Palmer. It has to do with the board wanting to make sure that we, we do this properly. And so we will postpone, but they have asked that, since it was such a late change in, in our intention of the agenda, there are folks that were ready and, and would, would like the opportunity to address the board about why a memorial to Ms. Palmer is something that we should consider. So unless the board has strenuous objection, I would like to allow them the opportunity so they don't have to go away and come back another day. Seeing none, I will, I will first go to Ms. McCourt, because she is representing the Recreation Commission that is charged with advising us on these matters. Hi, Sheila.
Hi, how are you, everybody? So the REC Commission listened to Mr. Sullivan and Ann Palmer's husband. And they, he, they told us all the wonderful things that Ann has done for this town. And I personally knew Ann. She, I get a little choked up. She was just a great person. She, I tell, I've told this story a few times. My oldest son and her son played soccer together. And my son was running down the field and she yelled, "Ravi, stop!" Because he was about, I guess, to go offsides. I was a football mom, not a soccer mom. And he said to me after, he's like, "Mom, why can't you do that?" I'm like, "Because I'm not Ann Palmer." I don't know all the rules. I'm not into it like she is. She was just the super mom that was into everything and was helping all the kids and she was there for everything. So personally, I do think the field should be named after her and I love that it's a woman for a change. But also, but I am representing the board, the REC Commission, I'm sorry. And we all did vote on it. We voted unanimously. We're not sure if this is our responsibility to put on us. This, this is our job. But we did listen and as a board, we do agree that it is a good idea. That's what I'm saying. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. McCourt. Yeah, it's so, the ultimate responsibility is, is this body, but we rely on the Recreation Department to, especially when it comes to the fields, to, to, you know, concur, to advise us. So thank you. Thank you and thank you to the board. I do see Mr. Sullivan has taken his video out. We will, as I said, we will certainly welcome comments from folks who would like to address this. Who, who would like to go first? Mr. Palmer or? Say. Seth, you want to invite, sorry. All right, I think, I think you can unmute now, Mr. Palmer.
How's that?
That's.
All right. Well, I will be brief. I want to be respectful of this sub-board's time. I know how much time and effort you put into this, serving this community, and it doesn't always get appreciated. There's, I will be brief. There's not much I can say without, because I am kind of biased. But I will say that Ann was the consummate county. She was so proud to live in this town. She dedicated years and years to the promotion of youth sports and not just boys' sports, because we had sons, but girls' sports as well. Ann was truly an ambassador of goodwill and sportsmanship. And I don't think there would be a person or there'd be very few in this town who would better put on, is the face of Citewatt. And as someone once said, you know, if, if not Ann, then whom from this town better demonstrated what it was to be a role model to young athletes and young, young female athletes, young girls. And I can't think of a better way to preserve her memory than to name a field after her, since there are few, if any, fields in, in the town that are in fact named after Ann. And that's all I have to say. And, and thank you so much for even considering this. And thank you so much for, for giving me the, the time to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I do want to note that we do have a lot of backup in our package that speaks to all of the contributions that your wife made to this community. So we do have, we have a lot of paper that, that supports exactly what you just said. So, Mr. Sullivan, would you like to add? Okay, up, we're gonna have to do the whole thing here.
He's a co-host. He can unmute himself.
Oh, okay.
John?
Thank you, Seth. Karen and members of the board, first, again, I'll reiterate, reiterate what Jeff said as far as the board giving consideration to this request. As you can see from the packet that we gave to the board, Ann exemplifies the attributes of someone who truly gives selflessly of themselves to others and for others. And as Jeff eloquently said, if, if not Ann, then who on earth would be better qualified than she? She gave to Citewatt Soccer for years. She gave to Citewatt Sports for years. She actually graduated from Central Elementary, which is where the fields are located. And one of the reasons that we thought those would be good fields is that's where her boys played. That's where she was involved in Citewatt Soccer. And then later she played softball on those same fields. We feel that, that Ann gave of herself in a manner that deserves recognition. And what more fitting a way to do it than to name these fields after her? And as Jeff said, she was very proud to be from Citewatt. She loved our town. She took great pride in our town and, and her life really was proof of that, the way in which she gave back, right until she couldn't give anymore. So I thank the board for its consideration and we're very much grateful to you for taking, taking the time you have to read the materials and consider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Are there others who would like to speak on this proposal? Sean? Okay, let's see.
How's that?
There you go. That was seen.
Excellent. Thank you. So first of all, I know that, can I speak for myself? But, you know, listen, I'm willing to come back again anytime and talk more about Ann Sullivan. It's my pleasure. So a couple of things, same as many folks, I had the pleasure of knowing Ann for, for 30-plus years. Just can't speak anymore highly of her character. And that comes through, and if you've ever met her sons as well. So I'm actually here really probably as a representative of every president of Citewatt Soccer since Ann. And that includes Frankini, Peter Martin, Jim Sweeney, Dave Smith, myself, Jen Shorestead, and Chris Nyland, the current president. And just in the past couple of days, did a quick poll of all of them and, and, you know, there were, all the reactions were, couldn't have been more positive. 100% support this. Nobody did more than Ann. Certainly since her time, there are literally thousands of, of children running around Citewatt. You've all seen them with Citewatt Soccer uniforms. It brings the whole trifecta together. There's the, there's the, there's the logo, right? That's Central Field. That's the case, anybody's wondering if you never knew. That's not the lighthouse. That's Lawson Tower at Central Field. And that's, you know, that's something that, that Ann leaves behind. She, she built that. You talked to so many of, of the other presidents. I know when, when I had my turn and I had a question and I would ask somebody, like, literally, Peter Martin's on. Literally go like, yeah, I don't know. Go ask Ann. Find Ann. Ann knows how to do it. She did all the buildings. She did all the working. She wasn't just the president. She did so many of the other activities. So we are all 100% behind it. As John stated, with Central Field is really the home of Citewatt Soccer, where hopefully many of you have had your children and see them out there on, you know, abnormally cold mornings. But Central Field, the tower, Citewatt Soccer, and Ann Sullivan, that is just a, couldn't it be a better synergy there with, with those three? So we strongly hope that you will all vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. I know that Lorraine is about to yell at me to say, neglected to ask you guys to state your address for the record, because we are public records. So I could.
Am I on 20 Briarwood Lane? Jeff Palmer.
And John Sullivan, 12 Parker Ave.
Mr. O'Connor.
Sean O'Connor, 132 Tilden Road.
All right, thank you. I apologize for that.
As do I, sorry. I know the drill.
Are there any, are there any other folks that would like to raise your hand or put your video on that would like to comment on this application? Ms. Curran?
If there's not another resident, I'll wait, but.
I, I don't see any hands raised at this point.
So I wholeheartedly support this initiative. I know that the board wants to take a look at our policies, which is the right thing to do. I did give John a heads up that that might be the way in which this may shake out, since we have some things to consider. I did know Ann, her boys were quite a few years older than my kids. But as I told the REC Department that evening, Ann really embodied sportsmanship. She was a great mentor. I don't know if the rest of the board knows, but she ran the referee training program as well for years. And she was always just such an iconic presence, really, not only just a central field, but up at the high school as well. And she enthusiastically, you know, Peter Martin was my girls' coach at Citewatt Soccer. And she was on the sidelines cheering those girls on every Saturday morning. She was such a great person. She had the biggest smile. And anytime I think of Ann, I just think of her smiling. She just really embodied what we really should hold near and dear to our hearts, which are people who have a positive impact on our kids and on our community. And I can't think of any better tribute to Ann than to eventually get to a point where we can name Central Field for her. And I'm so glad the Citewatt Soccer Club got together. I'd love to see you guys write a letter on, on her behalf, just so as we move forward, that we have some more documentation. And, and I'm happy to go out and, and get even additional, because I know there are hundreds of, of parents and residents out there that if they knew this was taking place, would speak on her behalf. She was a fabulous human being. And it was a, you know, a horrible loss to, obviously, her family, but to all of us who knew her as well. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. I did promise to Mr. Sullivan that we would, we would in due haste do this, our, our, our policy review, so that we do not delay this decision longer than is necessary. And I would like to just let everyone know that our colleague, Ms. Connolly, has agreed to take the lead on the reins. And she'll do a great job, because she's so familiar with, with policies, procedures, and also where things have already been named and what's appropriate. So I will leave it to, well, she's Kevin Connolly on her, on her little box, but Ms. Connolly.
We've renamed that three times and it keeps going, Kevin.
That's great. So with that, we will, yeah, we will, we will work as quickly as we can so that we can revisit this and you guys can, we can move forward with this conversation.
Madam Chair, I think there's one other person who may want to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do see Ms., Ms., one of the Martins, if you'd like to.
Am I, can you hear me?
We can. Would you name and.
Okay, I apologize. I, I, I don't know what I did.
We're all used to zooming.
You're gonna believe this one, Maury. Talk about the kids. I'm gonna be 61 on my next birthday. So this is not too good at this.
We can start, if you would start with your name and address, then I.
Martin, 43 Rebecca Road.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add, I mean, you, the accolades for Ann can go on forever and ever. And like Maury said, if we went around town, it'd be, we would get thousands of signatures or whatever it may be. But the one thing I always stood off, the two things that really stood off for me with Ann were, number one, the things that she did behind the scenes. There was so many parts. I, when I get involved with Citewatt Soccer, I firmly believe that Citewatt Soccer may not have got through a certain time when Ann was involved, if it wasn't for Ann. The, it was just a tad chaotic and, and she just brought the whole thing together. And I, you know, I maybe, maybe I'm exaggerating, but I think she really saved Citewatt Soccer. I really do. I believe that with all my heart. And the other thing that she did was, and being part of the program for as many years as I was, the one thing Anne always said all the time was, it's not just about the kids, it's about all the kids. And in soccer compared to some of the other sports, there's, you know, cuts. And, you know, in basketball, the kids get cut, football, whatever it may be. In soccer, they don't do that, they just go down to another level team. And she made sure that every single kid was involved and every single kid got the same participation time, the same, you know, style, class uniform, the same opportunities as every kid, no matter what your skill level was or, and again, you know, boys, girls, everything. And that's one thing that really, really stuck up to me. I know there's gotta be a ten, twelve, fourteen-year period of kids that if you mentioned Anne Palmer's name, their face will light up, as she lit mine up for many, many years. And I miss her dearly. That's all, thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your comments, we appreciate it. Is, I think that is the last hand up. So with that, we will certainly keep your comments in mind when we revisit this and appreciate you taking the time tonight to tell us about her and her contributions to our community.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will, oh, we're right on time for a public hearing, so that's good. We have a seven o'clock public hearing, vote discussion on the alterations of premises for a restaurant all alcohol license. Mr. O'Callahan's doing business as The Voyage, and there they both are. The, all the documentation is in the back of our package. And I just asked you to briefly let the public know what it is that you are proposing. It is a public hearing, so people are invited to add their comments after the board has for your proposal.
For us to go?
There you go.
Well, as we try to begin a plan for a long-term recovery, do I have to give our name and address first?
Nope.
Okay, we're good. We're looking for any and all ways to try to ensure survival or success. We need to plan for a new dining-out experience for customers to feel comfortable. We feel like the new norm is outdoor dining. I feel like it's gonna be a very long time before people feel comfortable dining indoors. I mean, even now, where it's twenty-something degrees out, I have a group of ladies that come in every Thursday night. They bundle up, they sit outside on the porch, they bring their blankets and they eat outside, they won't come in. So I just, I, we're trying to do something to keep us in business, so...
You know, Kilo Callan, the owner of The Voyage, as you know, we're an independent family-run, small business over here in Homarock. You know, I've been severely, you know, impacted by the pandemic, as have everybody else. With constant changes and restrictions and mandates, but forth, we kept, we had to look for ways to survive, I suppose, basically in the small business industry here. But the thing was, is that we're looking for always and anyway to like fill the gaps here. And we thought that trying to get the outdoor seating would be another avenue to, for you to generate any income, seeing as, you know, we have been severely impacted here. With that being said, it would be a, you know, an asset to Homarock if we did have it. Whereas we had the trial run before, from the previous summer, we did set up the benches, flower boxes, flowers, you know, colorful umbrellas, which actually beautified the Homarock entrance itself. We did get a lot of compliments on that, so we're quite happy on the feedback. So we're here tonight just to request if we could get a permanent open.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this correctly in our backup view, what you're asking is for two seats, two, is it seats or tables?
Tables.
Two tables on the porch and then one, two, three, four, five in, on the patio?
So we have, we have three tables out front and we will have three tables in the patio.
Three or four.
Okay, yeah, this shows one, two, three, four, five, seven additional. So you're thinking six additional or up to seven?
It will be six, we'll give it room. Yeah, it will be six. And they're all on our, I don't know, on property of Voyage, they're not on sidewalks or anything like that.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, but I'd like to open it up to the board first, see if you have any comments or questions about this application. Then I'll ask my, oh, Ms. Curran.
Sorry, hi, Rue, hi, Keith.
Hello.
Miss seeing you guys.
We miss you too.
I gotta get back down there soon. Is this just an extension, a permanent extension of how you're operating now through the COVID guidelines?
It's, yeah, we were going to do this before. We were all granted the temporary seating outside. We had actually applied for this and then we just stopped it because it was given to everybody.
We retracted our prominent request.
And then, once it was given to everybody and it went so well this summer, I mean, people can just walk right off the beach and everything suits it outside. It was just, it was nice for people. And the people that just don't want to come in, so we figured we'd do it, you know, go for it permanently instead of just temporary. Because like I said, we think this is gonna go on for a very long time.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I just have a question because I haven't been down there in a while. Did you redo that area or is it still more of like a driveway? Or is it now more of a patio-type environment?
Yeah, so I know a couple of people have been down, but we really, we redid everything there. We put all these planta boxes, actually, me and myself, took us four days to do everything, the benches, big long planta boxes.
We enclosed it in, Maury, but we took it down right now because it's winter and, you know, people aren't sitting out there. But we, so that it's not open to the street. We put planters all around it, put different stone down, you know, for the patio part.
We put a holster stand there and it was completely, you know, separate covering. The walkway, footpath in front was clear. We didn't impact any of that neither. And, you know, we have the porch already, so...
Okay, great. And as I understand it, it's not an addition, it's really an adjustment. You're taking out tables inside to accommodate the addition outside, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Mr. Vignani?
Hi, guys, thanks for coming before us. I think it's a great idea to continue the outside dining. Just to piggyback on Maury's last question, once the state allows the seating to go back to a hundred percent, I assume you'll move those tables back inside and just get additional seating outside? Is that the plan, probably?
Yeah, I mean, if we can, and right now we only have the forty percent capacity anyway.
Right. Well, cross our fingers that hopefully it will change by the summer anyways.
Fingers crossed.
My only question is entertainment and hours. And again, we've talked about this in the past. It just, and I know the neighbors in your situation aren't a huge issue because usually it's the summer and most of the neighbors are visiting you often. But I just want to make sure that I understand the hours of the dining out there and the entertainment thoughts that you have for out there.
But the thoughts on entertainment, we really, we really didn't plan on having entertainment outside. It was always, you know, just the terrace on the inside. So we didn't really, didn't become an ocean at all, to be honest with you. As far, as far as ours, you know, and that's something we'd have to talk about, that, you know, maybe like ten o'clock, eleven o'clock outside. Or we could use, we also use our own discretion as well, you know, because we do have, you know, people in the summer there, but they're mostly inside Voyage anyways.
Okay, so there won't be an entertainment license outside? And I think we'll probably have to get the hours if they're gonna be different than the inside in the motion, so...
There would be less, obviously, yeah.
Okay, this is something new to this request. So I was gonna just take a look to see what their hours are currently.
Yeah, probably till one.
Well, we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday there till midnight and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday there until one. But we won't have people out there dining until one AM.
What is, what do they do in Situate, in the domain? Outdoor dining over there, what are their hours? Are they till one o'clock, are they till less?
Who has outdoor dining, like?
TK's in the middle, Worf. And, yeah, I think Tony, unless we specified, I think extended premises, it's the same hour, operating hours inside now.
Yeah, we will.
I don't think we've delineated otherwise. But you're right.
Maybe we don't have to put a restriction on it, but obviously we're not gonna have people outside eating dinner until one AM. So, and there is no entertainment out there, so...
No, we'd use our own discretion there. We'd have them in, I would say, latest ten or eleven. They wouldn't be out there, I wouldn't have them out there anyways to that.
Yeah, I mean, that's my only concern because it is a neighborhood area. And certainly I think ten or eleven o'clock at night is very reasonable. So I don't know if that should be part of the motion or otherwise they technically would be able to serve until one outside.
Right, you're right, Tony. And I think Lorraine can get the backup, but I believe that all of the other outdoor venues have the same premise hours. But you're right, they're not, they're not in residential areas.
So I don't know how the board feels about just asking, and I don't, you know, if you think, whatever it is, you know, eleven to eleven or something like that, or eleven to ten during the, whatever you want. But I would just, if the board agrees, then I would say it should be put in the motion.
I'm just gonna just look at Riva, for example. Their outdoor patio is eleven AM to eleven PM, Monday through Sunday.
Okay, we wouldn't want eleven AM though, only because we do breakfast at seven.
I know, I'm just giving an example.
Yeah.
You can cap it at eleven PM, Tony.
Yeah, I think that's fine, so seven to eleven?
What time in the morning, Rue, did you want?
Seven o'clock is fine. So from seven AM to eleven PM.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's a good, a good motion. And I've forgotten that Riva's had that restriction. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board before I open it up to the public? Ms. Connelly?
Yes, just a question. So when we go back to normal, we're all assuming we will, will the outdoor increase? Will you also have dining indoor at a hundred percent? And then this is additional seating?
No.
No. So I'm not sure that's quite clear to me. And I assume what you're trying to do, you don't have a gigantic kitchen, so if there's only so many people you can serve. But on the other hand, I can certainly see in the summertime especially, people wanting to stay and just have a drink out on the patio, which is perfectly normal and nice. But, so I just want to be clear as to how many people you're gonna be serving in the normal time, in a normal summer.
I'm sorry, this is Lorraine again, and I just want to interject here because, because of the planning board and because they're on septic and not town sewer, they have a maximum seating capacity for forty-nine patrons.
Okay.
So your, the occupancy permit will govern that.
Then you answered my question, thank you.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Before I open this to the public? All right, Mr. Bedrow, did you have something? You were leaning anticipatory. Nope, okay. It is a public hearing, so I will invite any participant that would like to comment about this application. If you could go to the, react, is it reactions or button? If you, if you could raise hand function, yeah, it's under the reactions. Or just simply take yourself off, put your video on so we can see you. I'm seeing absolutely nobody like to comment on this. So that's, that's great. Is Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, so again, I certainly support anything we can do to try to help. But I hope, just, my comment would be to please keep, you know, communication open with us to see if there's anything else that we can do. So I support this wholeheartedly, so please, please let us know. That's...
Motion?
Yes, I was just gonna ask you for every motion.
Move the board's selection to approve the application for an alteration of licensed premises to allow for eighteen seats outside the restaurant.
Not eighteen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mine says eighteen. Eight on the thirteen-by-seven porch and ten on the twelve-by-eleven patio for an annual restaurant all alcohol liquor license for O'Callans LLC, The Voyage, located at fourteen Marshfield Ave in Homarock. The premises is one floor, two thousand one hundred square feet with three entrances and exits, and has a seating capacity of forty-nine thousand. The hours of this operation... We'll split in the middle, four hundred and ninety, with the seating capacity of forty-nine for the hours from seven AM until eleven PM.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. So any further discussion? Saying none on that, and none on the participants, this matter requires a roll call vote. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five zero. Thank you so much, looking forward to joining you down there soon.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
All right, then our next agenda item is to discuss vote, the town of Situate bonds. We have our treasure collector Pam Avatably here. I always hesitate to discuss the awarding of different bonds. So I will turn it over to you, Pam, to walk us through. We do have, obviously have all the backup in our packet.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I have great news to report. The town received competitive bids from bond and note underwriters on Wednesday, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, for a five million eight hundred and fifteen thousand, ten-year general obligation bond issue and a four million thirty thousand, one-year bond anticipated note issue. Raymond and James Associates, Inc. was the winning bidder on the bonds with an average interest rate cost of point four five eight percent. TD Securities was the winning bidder on the notes with a net interest cost of point two 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 four four percent. The town received a total of seven bids on the bonds and five bids on the notes. Bonds and notes proceeds will finance various municipal projects and refinance bonds of the town originally issued in two thousand and eight and two thousand and eleven. The refinancing of the bonds will gross a budgetary savings of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars over the remaining life of the bonds refunded. So we did very well in the market. And prior, prior to the sale, we met with S and P Global Ratings for credit rating for the issue of the bonds. And the town cited in the ratings was a very strong economy, strong management with good financial policies and practices, strong budgetary flexibility, a very strong liquidity and a positive credit factor. And they affirmed our double A plus rating. So...
Round of applause from the board.
Great news. The fantastic news. If anybody has any questions, I know more detail was provided in your packets. But I'm open to any questions.
That's extraordinary. So the only question I have is comparing to what the projection of the, of the bond, I mean, we had financial projections. How, I mean, this has got to be beneficial to the, to the financial projections of the town. Is that a Nancy question or Jim?
Yeah, I think Nancy's prepared some, some of that information for you.
Okay, did I miss that? Okay, phenomenal. Any questions or comments about this other than well done?
So everybody's clear, that's less than a half of percent on a ten-year note. So we should be doing all the streets, painting all the houses.
So the town won't see any savings, of course, in fiscal twenty-one, but they'll start to see the savings in fiscal twenty-two. And you usually refund or look at a refunding of bonds with a three percent savings. And this was... And you usually refund, or look at a refunding of bonds with a three percent savings, and this was over a thirteen percent savings. So.
That's great. Good job, guys.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything we can add to that, then. Good job. Mr. Goodrich, did you have your hand up?
No, there's a, there's a gentleman.
Yep, I was just gonna, just acknowledge. If the board has no other comments, Jack, we will ask you to unmute. Would you like to address the board on this matter? And I, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Jack Zarckowska, fifty-one Crowe Mansfield Drive. And just one question as far as, tell us what the longest duration is of the bonds that these are replacing?
Okay, so we refinanced twenty-year bonds for only ten years. So we, these are new ten-year bonds that rolled into some other projects for the refunding. We rolled into the, the Hummer Rock Fire Station into the bond, the high school locker rooms, the Wampa Tuck School, the permanent residual treatments wells, water plant and scatter for the Water Enterprise Funds, and the yard jockey replacement for the transfer station. So, the total will be a ten-year bond.
I, I was trying to get at what the, the average savings was per year for the duration.
Before the duration, so it's the five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Five hundred and eighty-three, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
Five hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Correct.
And again, that's over a period of, the longest duration would be ten years, twelve years.
Ten years.
Okay, great. That, that answers the question. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the bonds? Go see other questions?
Do you have anything you want to add, Nancy?
I always like to check with her.
Great, no, great job. Is there, is there someone that would like to make, we have several motions, I believe. I've got.
Actually, all you do is have to read the vote. And, and we'll have to see your faces at some point because there's lots of paperwork to sign.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, we absolutely have to have everyone in tomorrow morning so Pam can process this.
Okay, we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting. Figure that one out.
So I think the vote.
So where's, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the backup.
The vote is usually read by the clerk.
You have it. Oh, thank goodness.
I have it in front of me.
Okay, Adam Clark, would you care to read?
Shall I?
Please.
Madam Chair? I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Situate, Massachusetts, the town certified that at a meeting of the board held February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum were present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the one, seven hundred and ten thousand dollar borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, Article Three, Item S, at Item S, and two, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed November sixteenth, two thousand twenty, Article Seven, Item Six, is hereby determined pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Paragraph One, to be as follows. Purpose, borrowing amount, maximum useful life, high school locker room, seven hundred and ten thousand, ten years, jockey replacement, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, twenty years. Further voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at a one-time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty-one A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund a portion of the town's one, six million dollars, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand eight, bonds dated June fifteenth, two thousand eight, maturing on June fifteenth in the years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six inclusive, and two, nine million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand eleven bonds dated March seventeenth, two thousand eleven, maturing on March fifteenth in the years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand thirty-one inclusive. Collectively, the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the five million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollar general bond obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand twenty-one bonds of the town dated March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, the bonds, to Raymond James and Associates, Inc. at the price of six million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand and four dollars, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March fifteenth of the years in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Do I have to read the chart, or can I just say as indicated in the chart?
As indicated in the chart.
Yes.
Further voted to approve the sale of a four million, thirty thousand dollar bond, one point five zero percent general obligation bond anticipation note of the town dated March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and payable March fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the note to TD Securities, USA LLC, at par, and accrued interest plus a premium of fifty thousand dollars, six hundred and sixteen and eighty cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and a final official statement dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and the sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and a final official statement dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further, that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated March fourth, two thousand twenty-one between the town and U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent. Further voted that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing and significant events disclosure undertakings in compliance with FCC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town I'm never going to get through this. To establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond, bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update such said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax sub-status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the bonds and notes collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of, of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by any other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by then, them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached here too, was posted on the bulletin board of the town at least twenty-four hours before the meeting, in compliance with Section seven eleven of the town charter. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by a secret ballot, then a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or around the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set in forth, nine forty chap, CMR, twenty-nine point oh three, Section two B, and at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Sections eighteen to twenty-five, as amended, further suspended, supplemented, or modified by the executive order of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter Thirty A, Section twenty, dated March twelfth, two thousand twenty, dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. Clerk of the Board.
Well done, Ms. Conley. Thank you for reading that. Just for those who have nodded off, we are required to read that every time we do a bond, so.
Are you saying people weren't paying attention to me?
No, I was riveted. So what do we do next? I've totally forgot.
There's a motion to vote to approve the sale of the bonds that Pam wrote.
We have a motion and a second.
Does somebody want to read the motion?
Would somebody, vote to approve the sale of general obligation bonds for five million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and the general obligation anticipation notes for four million, thirty thousand dollars. Moved by me, by Karen Campfield. Is there a second, Mr. Goodrich? Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five zero. Thank you to everyone who, all the hard work to get us to this point.
Karen, just to give the board an idea, we have to do a rating call every time we do a bond offering, and Nancy and Pam do such an outstanding job with our financial advisor putting the packet together. At Standard and Poor's has told us we have the fastest rating calls of anybody they do because they have so much information. It's just a couple of questions we're all to do, so really all the credit goes to Nancy and Pam for doing this work and putting us in this position.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out, Jim. It's just extraordinary. We are actually getting spoiled because it's, it's been going on for so long, this department's just been humming along and representing so well, so thank you.
Great job, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions on this matter? All right, you're welcome to stay with us, Pam.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay. I'm already here.
Oh, great. Well, we will move on to our next item, which is a discussion vote of the donation of a memorial clock, post clock in Egypt, and we have Amy Barr, resident, who is the applicant in this matter. And I know the board, you've had a chance to look at the, the backup, but I will, I will ask Ms. Barr to give us the overview and we can get into the specifics.
Sure. Hi, how are you?
Good. I think you have to give your name and address as well.
I, oh, excuse me?
Sorry, just your address for the.
Oh, sorry. So I'm, I'm not a resident. I did grow up in Situate. I do live in Duxbury.
Well, we'll let you talk anyway. Address for the record.
Okay, five, five sixty-five Temple Street, Duxbury, Mass. Oh, two, three, three, two. So I did grow up on Christopher Lane, thirty-four Christopher Lane. My dad was Scott Roberts, and he passed on May twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty. And he was instrumental in getting the first one, I think it was the first Verden, I don't even know if I'm pronouncing it right, Verden or Verden clock for Chick Gates in North Situate. I think that was back around two thousand thirteen, but he worked with, you know, you guys to, to do that in memory of him. And then the one in Green Bush, you know, was, was donated. And so just when he passed, we wanted to do something more for him because he was such a lifelong resident of Situate and instrumental in, in the, in the town meetings. He was the, you know, chair of the advisory committee. And so we just thought a clock would be a good idea. So we did put it in the, in the obituary, and we've raised a lot of money, a lot just to let you know, many, many Situate residents gave to it. So that gave us hope that people agreed there should be another clock. And we just thought a great area. He used to jog. He did the loop of, of down by the Egypt Country Store and Captain Pierce and, and around Hollit and back around. That was kind of his loop that he walked, jogged. Plus for the, just for the pure fact that we grew up going to the Egypt Country Store, or what we called the posty, probably every single day for ten years. And so that little park is where I'm hoping to donate it. We, you know, we would pay in full on behalf of what we raised and just on behalf of my dad's estate. And the only thing I had, was discussing with Lorraine was just, there is that signage for Sean Powell. That's, you know, kind of was dubbed Sean Powell Square. We grew up with him, and he lived on Lawson Road, and he always, you know, was in and around the posty area, going to the posty and kind of hitchhiking in that area, so. And it does read that he was a Special Olympics gold medalist. So I did reach out to his brother, Tim, and ended up having a wonderful conversation with him for half an hour. He knows so much about Situate, it's unbelievable, and he has their family's blessing for us to put the clock in that little park area. If, and he thought it was a great idea and, you know, would love to come to the memorial. So that's just kind of where we stand now. It would have to be aesthetically, I've, I've walked by it a million times now. I walk in Situate on Saturday mornings with a friend, and it seems like there's plenty of room, but you know, I don't, you know, for visibility reasons. I guess that would be, besides you guys voting on it, just something to consider exactly where it would go.
And from the backup, it was, you guys are hoping that this can be installed by May for a one-year anniversary dedication?
Yes, that would be ideal. We, my, my brother is going to come and rent for a month, and he doesn't rent until June eleventh, so it doesn't exactly have to be, it would be nice, you know, but having my brother and his whole family not coming till, you know, two weeks past that, it would be okay if it was two weeks past that. But that would be the idea, that it would be on the anniversary.
Great. And as I noted at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know if you were on, that this, the memorial clock was something that was on our original memorial opportunity list, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I wasn't. No. Oh, so what do you?
We postponed, another memorial had been requested earlier in the meeting, and we postponed it because it was a new thing that we just haven't had a chance to think through, but this is something that was on, I believe, on our original memorial list.
Okay.
Nothing to do with your request, more for the boards.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about this application? Ms. Curran?
Hi, Amy. My name's Maura Curran. I actually had the pleasure of sitting on the advisory board with your dad, and he was a wonderful, wonderful man, and so passionate about Situate. And I met with him several times, even after he was off the advisory board, about different issues around town, and had such sound judgment and advice for me, a young incoming up. I'm not very young anymore, but back then I was compared to him, and just absolutely adored him. So I'm so happy to support this, and I was very sad to hear of his passing in May. I only have one question, one technical question, whereas do we know where in the, in the park we're going to be placing the clock yet?
So that's the tricky part that I would need help with. I know in, in the fall and spring and summer, those trees are very plentiful with leaves. I'm not even sure what kind of trees they are, but. Um, with leaves. I'm not even sure what kind of trees they are, but um. So, you know, now it looks like there's a lot of room, but I think that that, you know, that would be an issue. Um, so I would think, you know, uh, you know, obviously pointing out, so maybe people heading off, you know, on their commute, you know, just another. I like to think.
On time, yeah.
Yeah, I like to think people use them, you know, to to see what time it is. I do at the one at Green Bush when I'm scooting up north. But um, so that that I would need help with. A- aesthetically, I would be open to anywhere. Yeah.
Well, the installation.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Karen.
The installation would be supervised by DPW, so that'd be something.
And Kevin doesn't see any issues with the the uh, the location?
No.
Okay.
We have to make sure, we have to go out there and determine on the ground more where it's gonna go. It's gonna depend on where utilities are and all that stuff. He doesn't have a problem with it being in that pocket. That's what you're asking.
Thank you. Ms. Connolly, did you want to add something?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to uh, second Maura's uh. Complimenting Scott. I too was on the advisory board with Scott. And he was a great, great, great guy, great sense of humor. You have to be sort of a government geek to be on the advisory board. And he was, he was just terrific. So I I was also sad to hear of his passing, but he's thought of by a lot of people. That you probably don't even know. So um, he's, he was a terrific guy and we'll all miss him. Um, on a, just a technical point. So Lorraine, this was already on a list of opportunities. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, because I just want to be clear that the difference between what happened earlier in the evening and what is now. Is that that this was an existing opportunity. And so what we have to do is clarify going forward. Some of the more um, the issues related to fields, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you, Lorraine and um, Amy. Condolences, but this is a great thing to do.
Oh, thank you so much. I I appreciate it so much. It was so hard not being able to have a public funeral. So, um, yeah, and we've heard from so many people that. Still have just reached out that want to do something, anything to just, so I think this will be great in that sense. As well, just for, you know, people to come out. I know that if for Chick Gates's, they did a little blurb in the Mariner. Uh, a couple of weeks before and therefore had a good turnout for his. So maybe something like that, so people can at least give their condolences to us if they wanted to, which is very nice. But thank you. We've I've, we've heard from so many people and and uh, we just love Situate as much as 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 he did.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of uh, piggyback to Maura and Karen before they were on advisory board. Nineteen years ago, I met your father and um. He was a mentor, a sounding board, and most of all, just a very good friend. And we kept in touch for years, you know. You know, till the end of his life. So um. I think it's great. I think it's going to, you know, just a great person who was kind and intelligent and well spoken. And really cared about the town and was a unique leader. You know, he was very professional and quiet and and counted and. And and uh, really, when he said something, it was, is very pertinent. So um, I'm sure you know this, but he was very, very. Very, very dear to many of us in the in the town and and we all miss him very much. So.
And thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Yep, we we knew it and but it's so nice hearing from people. Definitely. So 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 glad he did touch so many. He was a great, great person. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I thought the board doesn't have any questions. Are there any other folks that are waiting that would like to uh? Make comments about this um, application? And I don't see any hands raised. Um, I think from the comments from the board, I would um, ask if somebody would like to make a motion.
Move to accept the donation of the Verden post clock from Amy Barr. To be installed at the Pocket Park on Captain Pierce Road.
Motion by Ms. Connolly. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Uh, this mo- matter requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
She said yes.
Mr. Goodrich? I think she's muted.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Uh, the only other. Item that our finance director. Asked me to bring up was the maintenance fees associated with the clocks. From Verden. I had put that in your backup. Um, would be. Uh, a topic to discuss.
Um, Mr. Bedrow, would you care to comment on this? We. Did get this a significant amount of.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's not a significant amount, just general maintenance is not a problem.
Okay. So you would advise? You would advise the board that uh, that this is something that would not uh, be excessive for the town to take responsibility of going forward?
No, we'll just take it out of Nancy's budget. It'll be fine. No, I mean, six hundred bucks, a thousand bucks is not gonna break any budgets that we, if you have a problem.
Thank you, Jim.
Right. And that's occasionally, not all the time, right? Right. Okay. Yep, I would just say that in the placement, obviously, um, DPW will do the same is just. Make sure it's not so close to the road as getting knocked down.
Yeah, that's true, too. That confusing intersection right there.
Yes, yeah. We don't want to give anyone a target.
Right, right.
Would uh, Ms. Holt like to add anything to that?
No, I'm fine. I just wanted you to be aware that we've talked about some of the, you know, pocket parks and the and the like and the maintenance of those. That that you'd be aware that there is a ma- there is maintenance for those clocks to make sure it stays in working order, the way that the donors want it to be.
Okay. All right. And it notes that these clocks are on a three year warranty from the date of installation. Um, and that we can have some cost savings from servicing them altogether. When they do need service. Okay. Do we know how long, how often they need servicing?
We have an annual um, maintenance contract for the clocks currently.
Oh, okay. That's what those figures are? Ms. Connolly?
Yeah, I I guess my question is Nancy, is the contract for a year? So so is it? Or do we have a contract for all of the clocks that are made by this manufacturer?
Yeah, we have a clock, we have a contract for the the two clocks um, that we currently have by Verden. Um, and it is a one year contract and it varies anywhere from eight hundred and ninety to nine hundred and ninety. They change their price from year to year. Um, I know uh, Lorraine reached out to them and potentially it would might go up to fifteen hundred for three clocks. Um, but their original clock installation has a three year warranty, so we wouldn't need main maintenance on it for at least three years.
So this has got nothing to do with with this, but it does. We may want to limit the amount of clocks we still, we still have available. Lorraine, is there a list of more clocks?
This is. Well, as the new chair of the Subcommittee on Memorials, you get to look into that.
I'm asking Lorraine because I think she knows the answer.
Yeah, there is uh, on the existing policy. One of the options is a post clock such as this. Locations are not specified.
Okay.
These locations were requested by Ms. Barr for her dad.
I guess my point is, and this is, you know, for future. We may want to limit the number of clocks we have available because if we start adding eight hundred to a thousand a year. We could wind up with a fairly hefty clock budget.
Yes, that's why Ms. Holt wanted to make sure you were aware of this.
Yeah, thank you.
Is the board of any um? Further uh, questions or concerns about this matter? Yeah, all right. Uh, so it was that, it was voted and unanimously approved. So I would uh, ask you, Amy, to uh, continue to work with Lorraine. You're in good hands. Uh, to work out the logistics and we'll look forward to seeing that. I think it'll look great there.
Okay, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much, Lorraine. I'll be in touch.
Okay, that's great, Amy.
Thanks for all the help.
Could I ask that if you do a um, a raising ceremony that you let Town Hall know, so? Some of us or many of us can also attend?
Absolutely. I sure will. Yeah, I sure will. I'll let Town Hall know. Yep, and hopefully, like I said, get it into local paper with us. Yeah, for sure, but I'll let Town Hall know. I really, thanks for all the kind words. I really appreciate it. Okay, I'll I'll exit the Zoom.
You're welcome to stay, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, bye bye.
Bye.
And we know, we know the Mariner is on this call, so make a note. Um, all right, we are uh, we are up ten minutes behind to discuss. The review discussed the bylaw change from Becky Malamute, who is our chair of our Water Resources Commission. When we met, was it the last meeting, the board had some questions. And the Waterways, uh, Water Resources Committee went back and and tweaked. The um, the language. Now I saw as I was. Logging onto this call that you, that we got another submission, a late hour submission. So I guess um. I I'm, I'm, I was a little confused about what the final language was, so I'll, I guess I'll have to ask you, Becky, to just walk us through where the. Were, ended up coming out.
So it was a late submission. We had our meeting last night, so we had to wait. I had to wait until I spoke to everybody.
Oh, okay.
Sent the new language as soon as I got everybody's approval.
Very from the proposed that made it into the packet?
So. Oh, I don't know what made it into the packet.
Oh, okay.
Last night after.
Yeah.
Um, just so I can clarify, what was in the packet was from our last meeting.
All right.
Um, Becky, at like nine thirty or so last night after her meeting. This morning, when I came in, I received the revised bylaw changes and forwarded it to the board.
Okay, right, yeah, okay. So Becky, could you just walk us through where the, where the uh, adjustments remain?
So what I did was, um, I removed all references to recommendations, which had previously been in sections three and section six.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So let me see. So um. So section three applicability had a section about with about um, private wells and recommendations, so we removed that. And then actually, let me pull up the other version for me. So section three is on the first page and it had said. Those persons on private wells are encouraged to abide by the following recommend- recommendations as well. We took that out. And then section six, which is unfortunately, this isn't um. Numbered, page three. Section six. Oh, but page four down, actually just above section seven had said. While the four water restriction tiers above do not technically apply to private wells. Uh, the town recommends and encourages well users to conserve, et cetera, et cetera, and to follow the tiers during the months of May through September. So we removed that. And then in section ten, which is the second to last page, in-ground irrigation systems. We added the language municipal properties. Uh, no, I'm sorry. What is it finally?
Municipal sports fields, maybe.
Fields may be exempt based on approval by the board or its designee.
Okay. Great, I think. I think.
Is there a reason it's just sports fields?
Were missed or should have been included.
I'm sorry?
I'm I'm asking the board if that, if you got everything. I think you did.
Yeah, those are the two things that we took, I took away from the meeting last time. Yeah, and I I I understood the concern as being, you know, the need for sports fields or we, I would say. The need for sports to be watered to a certain level so that they can um. Meet kind of the standards for sporting events, whereas something like a, a garden or a lawn wouldn't necessarily fall under the need to not. Follow this bylaw. So that was just my impression from Karen Connolly's comments, so that was related to the fields.
Agreed.
Yeah, I like that maybe not shall be.
Right, right, right. Because if there's an opportunity to not connect, we should actively take advantage of it and use it as a demonstration site to how it can be done.
Exactly. Uh, Mr. Goodrich, would you have your hand up?
No, I mean, ju- just to help clarify um, for select member Vignani. I'm still trying to figure out how we, anyway. You know, um, there's also in the, in the tier four, just above penalties, I wish there was numbers on it. It it, it's also recreational fields is also, so I don't think it's just um. At the discretion of the board, does any of the following uses may be allowed, even when mandatory restrictions are in place. And then some of the, the recreational fields, which which I think covered. It was a bit more broad.
That's for tier four. That's for the water ban, not the in-ground irrigation systems. But yeah, we called that earlier as well.
Yeah.
Great. Um, so as I understand it, the vote before the board is to uh, direct. The commission to draft the actual warrant. And then we will vote whether we support that article on March ninth. Is that correct? James?
Yes, you don't even need a vote tonight because you actually, this is Lorraine, I'm sorry.
Right.
We voted uh. For the, for the uh, Water Resources Commission to draft an article at the January nineteenth meeting. So Becky just came tonight really to update you on the changes you requested. And you'll be voting on all the articles at the next select board meeting.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Becky. I'm glad that uh, thank you for coming back and for making those changes. Is there? Are there any other questions about the revisions? Does everyone have any other comments on it? I see none. I see lots of heads shaking. All right, well, back.
No, I just, I just want to commend again the whole um. The, the water, the Water Resource Board, just in general. For just working together with so many different outside groups. It's just, it was a great process to see to try and take everyone's comments. So. I just want to thank all your hard work and everyone on the whole team. It's just been great to see. So thank you.
I will share that. Thank you.
Yes, great. All right, with that, we will move on and Becky, as always, you're welcome to stay, but you could have your evening back if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. All right, it is six, seven fifty six. We have, um, I believe it's our final budget presentations. Is that right, James? Yeah, and uh, so we're gonna start with our um. Uh, this is for fiscal twenty-two budget presentations and we have the Community Planning and Development. Group, which includes planning, um, economic development, conservation, coastal resources, zoning board of appeals and inspections. I'm gonna try to look at everything electronically, um, but um. Is um, is Karen?
They're all there. They're all there.
All there. So I'm gonna ask. Where's, if Karen Joseph is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. No video. That's where I got to. I'm gonna turn it over to you. Um, the planning budget is tab number one seventy-five for, in our planning books. Um, Karen, would you like to um, tee up the departmental review?
All right, the, the planning budget is uh, basically composed of salaries and um. Technical purchase of service, which is the sta- you know, we have some technical services, uh, binding and printing. That's been the same as it was the past few years. And the salaries, it's, it's contractual increases is what is um, in our, in our budget. Um, and the Director of Planning and Development, the budget, um, his numbers are in. For for that position, that position numbers are in the budget here.
Right, his or hers.
Right.
Um. Great. And obviously, the, you know, you, in addition to all of the regular work the planning department has been doing. You've been taking spearheading the development of the master plan, which has taken a great deal of time. So thank you for that. I'm uh, I'm sorry, I'm a little at a loss here because I don't have my paper. I'm trying to do computer at the same time. Does the board have any questions for Karen while I try to find the numbers here? I don't see any. Okay, I've found them. So um, budget wise, the planning department. The actuals for last year uh, was um, a hundred and ninety, I'm gonna round a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. What's? I'm sorry, uh, and the budget for twenty-one was a hundred and ninety-nine. And what we are recommending, I'm sorry, I'm on the computer, is two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Which reflects that um, addition, uh, return of the um, uh, Director of Planning and Development, the most part. Any questions about this particular budget or the planning department's work? All right, that. Um. Then we will. Move on to economic development. Karen, are you doing that or is uh, their chair on? Or am I?
I'm not doing, I'm not doing economic development. Um, I um, know that she wasn't able to come and I asked her to email Jim and Nancy. So I don't know what transpired um, with, if she got in touch with them.
Sue is not here, just so we know.
Yeah, I sp- Yeah, I spoke with her briefly, I think yesterday morning, and the EDC budget is, um, is comprised of the meals tax revenue, which is obviously going to be down next year. And, um, what I would recommend for the board is that we invite EDC to come in sooner rather than later to update us. They've been working very closely um, on plans to sort of help our community and our businesses get up and running when the, uh, when the restrictions are, 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 um, are eased. So, um, that's why she's not here, and the, and the numbers themselves are, are pretty, pretty self-explanatory. Okay, if there are any questions on that, we will go on to the next is Conservation Coastal Resources, one seventy-one tab in your books. I did see Kyle was in at some point. Oh, there he is, he's in San Francisco.
Amy is there as well.
Hello.
Hi, Kyle. How are you?
Doing really well. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good. All right, I'm trying to find the right folders here. Um, would you give us an overview of, of, uh, your department and your budget, please?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll give a quick overview of, uh, the things we did this year. Um, and then I'll turn it over to Amy to talk a little more about the budget. But yeah, so this past year, um, we closed out five home elevations. We have three home, active home elevations right now, and we just applied for two more. We closed out the fifty-year coastal vision, the downtown harbor master plan, uh, the Peggy Beach manage-retreat feasibility study, and we just finished the five-year CRS terminal, almost. Uh, we just have some extra stuff. We're cleaning up with them. And we just launched the hazard mitigation plan, so that is active now, working with all the different departments to, um, put that together. Um, and I'm currently looking at some grant applications um, to apply for design, preliminary design in, um, the harbor. And also, uh, I would like to apply for a grant for North Citrus. So those are my, uh, department focuses. My budget really is all built into grants, all those grants. So I don't really have too many like office or, or anything like that. So I'll turn it over to Amy unless you want to ask me questions now in regards to mine.
I just have a quick question. The, you, you mentioned the, the, the grant applications for the harbor in particular. I assume those are for some of the recommendations from the, the study?
Yeah, so it, uh, we did that, um, with M A P C, and M A P C actually has an accelerating climate resiliency grant program that they said we would qualify for and be highly competitive. Um, and it helps that they did our downtown harbor master plan and they're all, you know, so they're interested in that. And, um, there's something doing that in the coming weeks. So we're going to apply for conceptual design for, um, it's, it's not, like, there's no design at this time, but it's basically like to apply so that they can create a conceptual design.
Great, terrific. Any other questions for Kyle before we ask Amy to, uh, Ms. Karen?
Um, hi, Kyle.
Hi, Mara. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Thanks for this. You got, you, you've been very busy. You've done great work. Can, can we get, um, you know, Jim and Karen, can we get Kyle on the agenda to talk about prioritization of the projects before us? You know, I, we've done so much analysis and so many studies. I think we need to start thinking about, you know, where we're going to start investing our money over the next ten years with regards to coastal resiliency and, and I feel like we talk about this quite often in piecemeals. So if we can kind of gather all the information together and get a strategy, in a prioritization schedule, I think it'd be really helpful for all.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and we're actually working on that now. Um, so the CAC, it's a really cool project they're working on. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but they are, we had the forum where we basically went over all the projects that have been done in the last ten years, but we're planning another forum where our CAC members, including myself, are going to present all the recommendations that have been made to date in the bigger plans. And it's not going to be an opinion, um, type, uh, presentation. It's going to be specifically these are the facts. And so from there, we're going to start the dialogue on, these are all the recommendations in one place. Um, and then we'll start the prioritization. But, you know, I'm looking personally at low-hanging fruit that's also like high, high-impact areas. For example, the harbor. The edge is town-owned, and it's also like the, the heartbeat of the community. So that, to me, is a no-brainer that we can move on, um, quickly. So it's, it's kind of, um, it's, it's going to be a assessment that blends, um, the, the ability to implement with, um, also like how dire, um, is a specific area, you know? So those two elements.
Perfect. Well, I look forward to that. I didn't know you were pulling that together, so that's great.
Thank you. Yeah, and Louise, you know, you know, she's fantastic. So she's, yeah, she's really leading the charge.
A great question, and, and, and I'm glad to know that this is moving along. So Kyle, maybe we can talk offline and just figure out good timing, because I think that would be great when you're, when you're ready and, uh, to just really have a focused conversation would be great. So let's talk.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Kyle before we turn to Amy? All right, our Conservation Officer, Amy Waki. How are you?
Great. How are you, Karen?
Well, good, except I am technologically challenged today because I've got everything on one little laptop, trying to look at everything, all the papers. So, I did find Conservation Budget. Would you like to give the board an update of what you see coming for the year and and sort of the, the big, the big, the heavy lifts for, uh, the last twenty-twenty? Everything was a heavy lift in twenty-twenty, but.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it's ki- kind of like Karen, um, you know, our, our departments are, are, are pretty, uh, straightforward with our budget. You know, we, we've got in, in, in my budget for Conservation, we have staff for three members, so that doesn't include Kyle's salary as well. And so it's myself, Kyle, and minister, uh, my administrative assistant, so there's our salaries. And then otherwise, it's, you know, just office supplies and postage and a little bit of training. Um, and also we carry administration for some of the Conservation Land Trusts, um, including the Driftway Park Account for Maintenance and Development and Conservation Fund for maintenance and keeping the public conservation land safe and accessible. As you know, uh, we are definitely one of, one of the buil- busy offices, um, in town. We get a lot going on. You know, we, we administer, um, and enforce the, the State Wetlands Protection Act and the, the Town of Cituits Wetland Bylaw and, um, storm by, stormwater bylaw. So, so that really, um, you know, we oversee jurisdictional work, um, which is any property in the flood zone. So that's all the properties along the coast, and any properties within a hundred feet of resource area or within two hundred feet of a perennial stream. So, um, clearly that touches a lot of situat property. So, you know, any shovel-in-the-ground property, so that would include, you know, decks, additions, um, raised rebuilds, you know, your more significant projects, like subdivisions and athletic fields and water plants and forty Bs and foreshore protection, seawall projects. We, we, we kind of touch it all. We thankfully, um, you know, with technology from the town, we were able to pretty seamlessly transition without much downtime for permitting. You know, we, we didn't really have much of a loss with our hearings. Um, we were able to move right along, which, you know, other towns, I mean, some, some of the other towns really did slow down in, in the permitting, but, but we did keep plugging away, um, which is good, because we have a, a pretty high, um, you know, a pro- a high volume of permits that we see through the office. So, you know, um, so, I mean, do you want to go over some of the exciting projects that, that we were involved in? Would include the open space trails. So, uh, you, you've probably seen that there's new parking and access for open space trails in the West End. And we're definitely looking to get the word out, and I think the word is out actually, that increase in use on those trails, just since we've had the parking in has been, and with people at home, has, has been fabulous. As well as the, the parks, you know, Driftway Park and Ellis have seen a pretty great increase in use in those trails. You know, like other projects, our office, our Conservation Commission is involved and would include the just in the past year, the North-South River dredging project, Egypt Beach berm, Tac Factory Water seventeen A, Seaside Cituate, uh, ongoing construction at Herring Meadow and Stockbridge Landing, which are two forty Bs, High School Track and Field, Cedar Point Sewer. I mean, so you can see we, we, we've got a lot going on, I guess is the point.
That's great, yeah. I mean, I, it's, it's extraordinary how every department has figured out how to keep town business going through all of, all of the challenges of the last year. So thanks for, uh, keeping the lights on there.
Yeah.
And as you said, the budgets, uh, you know, really, the, as, as most of our budgets are, as the majority is, is, um, staff and salary and their step increases, and that's really the only, only changes that we're seeing.
Right.
So, um, any, any additional questions for Amy about Conservation? Ms. Karen?
Sorry, I feel, I feel like the, I'm a little chatty tonight. I apologize. Amy, is there any technology, um, investments that we should be making to help you with all the permitting backlog, or is, is Conservation more unique to more of a manual process? I just can't help to think that there's got to be something we can help, you know, your department with, kind of get through these things.
Yeah, um, well, so it, there is software that, um, you know, is out there, but we, we, that the new software that the town bought is more specific towards building and some of the other straightforward permits. Whereas Conservation and Planning, they're a little bit of outliers where our permits are very individualized depending on the site. And, and a lot of it's database management, but certainly it's something to, to think about, um, to increase efficiency for sure. We've come a long way, I have to say. Since, since I've got here, I mean, I, I feel like we've come a long way as, as far as organization and you know, just with keeping up on emails and, and stuff like that. Although, a lot of people still want old school, they, you know, they want to see you in the field. They want, want the phone calls, you know, they, they want a piece of you, so.
I just didn't know if there's anything that you'd seen out there in the market that would be assistance that we should be considering to put on our capital plan, you know, moving forward.
I'll give it some thought.
Okay, we know you need help, so, and we know, you know, any way that we can do that, usually technology seems to be one of the better ways to be able to do that when possible, so.
Yeah, I mean, extra staff would be great. I mean, I think if, if I were to have a, you know, like an ask, like a, like I wish type of thing, it would probably be for, you know, maybe a shared position between, um, you know, building, uh, Conservation and Planning for the ongoing construction sites that we have, because that does seem to be a challenge to keep abreast of, of some of those active construction sites. Although we generally, you know, do rely on, um, consultants, uh, to follow those projects, but.
Right, duly noted.
Thank you for that information. Are you done, Mara? Sorry. Um, any other questions or comments for, uh, Karen, Amy, or Kyle? Okay, great. Keep up the good work, guys. Kyle, oh, sorry. Kyle will talk about the next steps offline. Under this umbrella, we still have, we have two other departments, zoning, board of appeals and inspections. I see Mr. Vogel here. Are you pitching for both?
I am pitching for both.
All right. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Um, where would you like to start? Zoning or?
I think zoning is probably a good, good place to start.
Okay, great.
Uh, so a couple of social notes before we get to the numbers. Um, there's going to be, or will, will, um, will be as soon as we get, uh, suitable replacements, a couple of vacancies on the zoning board. And so I'd like to uh, encourage anybody who has an interest in that direction, who may be watching, uh, to get ahold of the selectman through, uh, through your office and, uh, you know, put in, uh, the, uh, the resume or just to indicate the fact that you are interested, because we are definitely going to need a couple of new members, at least within the next, uh, few months. So that's an important, uh, an important, uh, event to occur. Uh, the other one is that, uh, for most of last year, or at least a good part of it, the Position of Zoning War Secretary. Very, and, uh, two thoughts on that. The first is to, to thank and really, um, praise Annie Kelly for filling in, uh, from her position as Building Department Secretary and taking on the duties of the CBA Secretary as well during, during that period. And the second is to, um, be extremely thankful that we now have the position filled with a very capable, a person, Janine Chukaze, uh, and things could not be working out better, in my view. So that's a huge, huge sigh of relief. Of, as far as zoning goes, the activities don't really, uh, change too much. Uh, the forty Bs that the board was so involved in, Herringburg Meadow and, uh, Stockbridge Landing are now both under construction. So the board's involvement ramps down a little bit, public hearings and that sort of thing. Uh, but there is still some managerial duties, uh, concerning inspections and bill paying and that sort of thing that the board's involved in. Uh, other than that, you know, the board has been busy with the usual, um, requests for special permits uh, and findings for individual homes, uh, as well as some, um, some peripheral kind of subdivision work. The budget is, uh, our income consists basically of filing fees. That really hasn't changed. Uh, we project around eight thousand dollars, which is about the same as we've done the past few years, uh, for fiscal, uh, twenty-two. As far as the expenditure goes, um, like other boards, it's mainly, uh, salaries, personnel. Um, it's interesting, you look at our twenty-twenty actuals and the personal services, meaning salaries, are that way down. That's because that position wasn't filled for a lot of the time. So that's back up to where it typically is. And then a little bit of an increase due to union, uh, contract negotiations, uh, closing out and that sort of thing. So basically, it's a pretty simple, uh, track on the budget, uh, keeping, uh, fairly, uh, steady and, and level funding, except for those, uh, those particular issues.
Great. Yep, that is pretty straightforward. Looking at the numbers, it was fiscal twenty-one budget was around twenty, am I looking right? Yeah, zoning enforcement was twenty-six. And, uh, twenty-two department recommendation was, is, uh, well, I rounded up both sides, so yeah, basically unchanged.
It's about the same, yeah.
That's about as level funding as you can get.
It is.
Questions about the zoning. Thank you so much for alerting us, um, to the openings. This board is critical to overseeing, um, uh, sensitive projects in town. So um, we'll, we'll give some thought to how we can get the word out, but certainly we'll mention it in the town updates that we do every week. Try to get.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's in there.
Appreciate that.
At zoning before we move on to building inspections? No? Okay, all right.
All right. Uh, the Building Department, um, we've done a few interesting things, um, in terms of trying to move forward, um, with, uh, technology, uh, mentioning it, uh, in connection with Conservation. Uh, we have the same kind of needs. One of the main things is, uh, it appears we're going to be changing our main software over the next few months to, uh, a new, uh, program called Full Circle, which the, um, the early exposure that we which the the early exposure that we've all had to it indicates it's it's got more things that you can do. It's more capable. It's a little, well, it may appear less user friendly simply because once you're used to using one, you know, one program, another one always looks a little strange at at first, but I think it's going to be a positive change. And one of the things that we hope it will do is allow us to go on electronically with building permits, which right now are still paper. We do plumbing, gas fitting, and electrical permits online. But building permits principally because of all of the documents that have got to be attached, the plans, the insurance forms, all kinds of things that, you know, may need to be attached, given a particular permit, become a little bit more difficult to go online, but we're heading in that direction. So that's that's going to be a real plus when when we achieve that. It may be still a few more years because the contractors that we work with, many of them just don't have the capability of of scanning and presenting their material to us in digital form. So that's that's kind of that's going to kind of evolve over time and something we can't really push, although it it will happen, there's no question. The other exciting thing is that there's a placeholder in the capital budget plan that's based on digitizing our archives. I don't know if anyone's had the pleasure of visiting the archives in the basement of Town Hall, but it's pretty scary. And the last forty or fifty or maybe sixty years of building permits are all in banker's boxes on shelves, sorted by, sorted chronologically, which is just ridiculous. I don't know another word for it. Because what you really want to have them is sorted by address. So if somebody comes in and says, you know, I want to see everything that ever happened at fifty-eight Branch Street, you can go to the fifty-eight Branch Street file and there it is. That's now impossible, completely impossible. So we're we're looking forward to that happening. It's going to be an expensive process. It'll take time. Lots of towns have done it, and clearly it's something that at least hopefully within our lifetimes, has got to be accomplished. It's the only way to go. It's just a long, a long drive to get there. So but it's it's started at least. So those are those are two, I think, pretty good accomplishments at this point. Let's see, what else have I got? We helped out Carl, Kyle, in the CRS report and are working pretty constantly with Amy, with Karen, you know, and the other departments. We kind of overlap on a lot of our activities concerning the permits. We have the forty Bs that are happening. Haringburg Meadow is supposedly ready to start vertical construction this spring. Drew Company has just received permits for their major operation in in Green Bush. So you'll see things happening out on the Green Bush MBTA lot pretty much within a few weeks or a couple of months, something like that, that's moving forward as well. Stockbridge Landing is now fully under construction. They're in the sales mode. They've completed probably about a third of of their construction and seems to be going well. In terms of numbers, we have fiscal year twenty income of nine hundred sixty-two thousand, which is up quite substantially from fiscal year nineteen. We're looking to project to fiscal year twenty-two for around a million one to a million two. So that's a product of a couple of things. One's activity clearly, especially the very large projects that we've encountered. And another is that, as you remember, the board authorized a a change in fee schedule about a year and a half ago now, and that, you know, the impact of that has certainly been positive in terms of of our income stream. On the outgoing side, if you look at the budget, we're pretty level funded, except for one line item, which is part-time salaries. The explanation for that is, first, we've raised the per inspection remuneration that we pay our outside inspectors to be more competitive with surrounding towns. And again, the board board was aware of that, I believe. That's been about a year and a half in in place. Second, the number of inspections are increasing substantially. So, you know, we pay per inspection. So if there are more projects, then clearly there are more inspections. However, if there are more projects, clearly there are more permit fees as well. So it's pretty well self-funding in in that regard. As as I said, we're looking for a couple of hundred thousand dollar increase in our overall income between last year and this year. So of the thirty thousand dollars that we are looking for in terms of budget increase, about twenty-seven thousand of that is that one one-line item. There's a couple of other small increases over last year, and then there's a couple of interesting sort of COVID-related areas where we budgeted or an amount that was we we felt was adequate at the time, but, for instance, twenty twenty actuals for conference and meetings. Well, there weren't other conferences and meetings, you know, everything was online. And so that expenditure, you know, that we had budgeted for wasn't made. So, you know, that's a good thing, but we will need that, we hope, going forward as the world gets back to normal.
Yeah, great. Well, it's it's extraordinary. I mean, the numbers reflect how much activity in the department. So, you know, I'm sure, like Amy, like many of our departments, wouldn't hurt to have more bodies, but at least with the your structure, you can get you can get consultants in as well. And I can't imagine how she would do it. So, yep, the the line items are, you've been very thorough in going through the items, so I won't reiterate. Does the board have any questions about building and all that's going on in in our building department? Ms. Connolly?
Yes, all of these fees go into the general fund. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Lots of work going on. So.
We're busy for sure.
You are.
Nobody's worried. Yeah, then as everybody else, layer on top of it, all the safety protocols.
Yeah, that's true.
Great. Well, I look forward to getting you guys up and running on the electronic, on the permitting side. I think that'll be a great improvement. And I'm sure the archivist will appreciate getting those boxes sorted out, too.
Boy, if that ever happens, you have no idea what a an improvement and kind of a milestone that will be.
Great. If there aren't any further questions for Bob, we will. And I think we've covered everything under Planning and Development. Did I miss anything? I don't think so. So we'll move on to another another budget. Bob, you're welcome to stay with us.
Probably won't, but thank you very much.
Well, we just have a small school department budget to review next, so.
Well, it's it's been a pleasure. Nice to see you all.
Thank you so much. With that, we will go to tab three hundred, which is our school department, and we have, I see our superintendent, Mr. Burkett, has joined us, as well as our, as the school finance director. Is that your actual title? Dr. Touch is with us. And we received a great deal of background information and, you know, in reviewing it, I personally, there's, you know, there's so many questions that I, as a resident, have. And I'm balancing in my mind that the the responsibility lies with the school committee to get into the weeds with you guys. But we appreciate the opportunity to look at at what is the lion's share of our town budget. So I will turn it over to the superintendent and Dr. Dutch.
Am I able to share my screen?
I believe so. Seth?
I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
You want to share a screen? I think as a co-host, you can do that.
There you go. There you go, Dr. Dutch. You got it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair and Seth Board. It's an honor to be here, and I wish Bob didn't leave so quickly. I think he'd be exhilarated by our exciting presentation tonight, and I'm sure he'll watch the reruns, though. So again, we're excited to be here, our first go-through as the new superintendent in Bob and his new position as, you know, Director of Business and Finance for the Central Public Schools. So we're looking forward to our presentation tonight and answering any of the questions that you may have. Just a little overview, the budget is a reflection of the district values and is the philosophy we used for this year's budget process. An increase in the FY twenty-two revenue, along with our ability to make practical decisions in prioritizing our values. I believe this budget reflects a strong investment in our children's future. And a great deal of work went into the development of this budget, as you can tell by the number of documents and detail. I'd like to thank Dr. Dutch for all his effort, along with his assistant Cindy Sayso, my assistant Kim Peters, our central office team principals, department chairs and coordinators, and teachers. I'd also like to thank Peter Gates and Mike Case from the School Committee for their service on the newly formed Finance Subcommittee, and to our Town Administrator Jim Boudreau, Finance Director Nancy Holt, and the rest of the members of the Financial Forecast Committee, including Pam Avitabale, Joe DeVito, Tony Vannani, Chris Karshia, and Jerry Kelly. I've, this system or process with the financial forecast, planning of a budget, was really new to Bob and I, and it was extremely impressive. I was also impressed with the collegiality and collaboration that takes place between the school and the town. And I believe it reflects positively on our schools and the town of Situate, so I want to thank you all and for your efforts and work in in teaching Bob and I the ropes, but also cooperating, collaborating with the school. We felt very welcomed in having a seat at the table. Finally, we appreciate every single penny of what the town is able to afford to Situate schools, and we take great pride and responsibility as stewards of your investment. With that being said, Bob's going to start the presentation here. I'm just going to try to move something out. So I'd like to start off with our vision. As I said, the money we spend is really reflected in values. What you what you value is what you spend your money on. And so some objectives that we look at are, we've kind of referred to them as two pillars to just to explain what our vision is. And the first pillar is safe and strong. This year's pillar was safe and strong reopening. The and the large focus of our time has been reopening our schools safely and to a high academic and emotional, socially, emotionally high standard, and to further reopen them, hopefully getting to full in-person learning. So that's been our goal this year. We're revising that for next year. It's still it's still going to be safe and strong, but rebuilding and reimagined. We build pieces that we know that there's been loss in learning and social emotional growth, possible trauma, and other things. We're addressing that now. However, students haven't been in full person learning in almost a year now. So we know there's going to be some things that we have to rebuild, and it also includes our our structures, our buildings, and how we take care of them. The reimagine piece is that I don't anticipate returning schools to the old normal. I think we've learned so much from working remotely and through hybrid models that we've picked up a lot of really good techniques, tricks of the trade, that we intend to implement in how we reimagine schools. That would be a focus of our work. I think these meetings are probably good examples. Last night, we had close to three hundred people at our school committee meeting. Ordinarily, I've never seen that in person. So just the invent of having Zoom allows you to do that. So a couple of quick highlights in this budget to align with pillar one. It's about people, not programs necessarily. It's important. Majority of our budget, as you know, is is people. So additional staff to support social, emotional, learning, and academic needs of our children, and increased funding of our maintenance line item, corresponding comprehensive maintenance plan. So this is this is brand new. This conversation came up a lot when we started having to prepare our buildings and upgrade the air quality in HVAC systems due to COVID to meet the needs of our returning people back into our buildings. We were helped with the CARES Act in doing so, and we were told by every single person that's come in to work in our buildings that has passed here, that they've never been in better condition. Now, the lesson learned from that is that that needs to be maintained and can't wait till CARES money to bail us out again. So we've started a new line item with maintenance, and we're developing a comprehensive plan to be more responsible proactively for our buildings. Pillar two, Bob?
It's additional staff is part of pillar one.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm falling along here on the long screen. So the additional staff that we're talking about here is, the first two are at the Gates Middle School. And currently, we have one point five positions in each of the ELA and math literacy. We want to move those to those point fives to full-time positions by adding a point five to each. Put a bullet in for each of these, but in summary, we're not meeting all of the needs of our our students that are struggling. This is a stopgap to catch those kids from falling through the cracks, get them supports in place, especially post-COVID. We anticipate that that need will still be there and maybe more intensive. So we want to increase increase those needs and address those issues we have at the Gates Middle School. The next two are more special education involved, and they also align with increasing part-time positions to full-time. The first one is occupational therapist. That would go from point seven to one point O, district-wide position. Basically, we're under service there. We have too many needs and not enough staff in that area. We've got several programs which we're trying to implement and keep going so that we can keep our students in district and not send them out of district, which gets which gets very expensive, as you'll see. But we also need the support to for those programs. Also, there, what we found this year is, by those programs being understaffed, we're consulting or bringing other people from the outside in, which gets very expensive. And so this investment will save us money and provide additional services from people within our own buildings. Same with speech and language at the early childhood level. The next position is adding a full-time nurse. I think never before has it been more important to have health services than now. Our nurses see overnight have nine thousand visits, and that's probably going to increase this year. And we all know that nurses deal with physical symptoms, issue medicine, but they also deal with chronic health issues and and social emotional learning, and they're a great conduit to student learning. What's not on here, what this position also grants us, and this position would be a split between the middle and high school, which have the most traffic. Currently, our nurse leader, school nurse, district school nurse leader, is positioned at the middle school and also has basically the additional role of being the district nurse leader, which you can't do both jobs well. So this position would not only prevent greater supports for both our middle and high school and the services we needed, it would free up the district nurse leader to oversee the entire district, to make sure there's consistency in our nursing programs and services, to offer and teach PD for our nurses, and to provide consistency from school to school and throughout the district and our services to students through the nursing department. So it's a double bonus for that position. And then a librarian is is point five at the high school. Not many districts around, I know, that have less than a one point O, if you're if you're using them appropriately. And the New England Association of Schools and Colleges that came in last year to do a assessment of our district pointed out that that is a need for us to have a full-time person in the library. In case you haven't heard, we had a shore donation and some of our own monies to renovate our library to, it's centrally located right in the high school, and we're going to make it a learning hub, a multi-person, a purpose multimedia place for people to go and to, for students to use, and we think we'll maximize our use there. So we need that person to be there and have that place open before school, during school, and after school. So pillar two. So pillar two, again, was a pillar for this year and continue into next year. Diversity, equity, inclusion. We safe, caring, inclusive and trusting. I call this DEI sit. So we want to create a culture of, you know, safe, caring, inclusive and trusting, a place where people want to be, feel safe, cared for, challenged and pushed. And so come all the big highlights here that have been talked about this year, a new Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. And, you know, that position we feel is going to be an outstanding arbiter of, of the work we do here in the glue that puts it all together. We think that's a visionary position that we are creating there. And probably the biggest thing on the, the budget tonight and the thing I'm most proud of is Free Full Day Kindergarten for All. I think it's been 11 years in running since there's been a pretty significant fee. And this to me speaks highly to equity because it becomes the haves and the have-nots. Those that can afford can go to full day, those that may not go to half-day and at a young age, we're creating equities. So I think this is a gift to the community. It's something that has been a bane of the school committee's existence. And when I was hired, I was, one of my goals was to get rid of all the fees. I think Situate School Department is run on, on a lot of fee-based structures and it shouldn't be. So this is one we want to tackle first. So you'll see reflected in our budget that this year we aim to get rid of that and sustain that throughout the years moving forward. So some of the highlights you'll see reflected in the numbers tonight. A significant increase in town appropriation from last year. Again, I can't thank the, the town enough in the way the process was done and the amount of money we appropriated. And we want to show that we're putting it to good use. The additional staff is to support the social, emotional, learning and academic and excellence and equity. Returning from a pandemic, we, we don't want to miss a beat and we don't expect to. We want to have high level of academic excellence while maintaining social, emotional needs that we know our students and staff will have. The increased maintenance I talked about, to have that plan in place and to start taking care of these buildings proactively is going to be something we're excited about. The Free Full Day Kindergarten, again, I think is a an exciting thing that impacts the entire community. And one thing I haven't mentioned yet is a new enhanced literacy foundational phonics program for our K-2 learners. It's been, it's at night, 2008 since we had our last reading foundation program. So it's outdated and teachers are kind of supplementing their own supplies and things lose consistency there. And so we want to invest in a really key component of student learning, their K-2 years when they learn how to read. So that will be one of our highlights as well this year. This slide is important and it's something that we need to keep an eye on, especially this year. You see the consistency between 18 and 19 and 19 and 20, pretty close. This year, I think relatively speaking, if you look around at other districts in, in the state, you know, we've fared extremely well. We're down 126 students and a majority of them are in the younger ages. I think there's 39 in kindergarten. Actually, you can see it on the left of the chart there. 13 in, in 39 kindergarten and then another 13 in pre-K. And so you get 52 right there out of the 126 are in the younger grades where parents, I believe, because of the pandemic have chosen to wait a year and to make that decision for next year. So relatively good shape, all things considered with our enrollment, but something we'll certainly keep an eye on. So we thought it was important that the Select Board and our community guests understand the process that goes into this. It's very methodical and inclusive. We start our budget year in July 1st and in November, with a new Finance Director in Bob and new Superintendent, there were some changes made and some new ways of doing things. So forms and guidelines were sent out to principals and department heads in early November. By mid-November, we were having discussions with our cost center leaders about the vision, the pillars, how we wanted to spend our money and make sure that we're consistently looking into those visions when we request monies and how they're spent and to do so purposely and responsibly. In December, the budget requests come in and basically the principals and department chairs work with the teachers. What do you need? You know, what would benefit us? Here's our vision. And so there's a lot of involvement from everybody in the district. Those requests come into Dr. Dutch. We look over them and we have individual meetings with all our cost center leaders. Similar to what you're doing tonight, we had these conversations. They defend their requests. We ask questions. We go line by line, especially this year being new. We dissected the entire budget and we, we basically everyone had to justify every single penny they were spending. And when that was a very healthy and good exercise for us. And so after that, in, in all while this is happening, we're also going to financial forecast meetings, Dr. Dutch and I. Something that hadn't been happening in a, in a while that we brought back to include our school committee in the conversations and to have input is a finance subcommittee. Two school committee members, Bob and I, would meet and we'd update them and apprise them of the financial forecast updates as well as our budget process, details and questions, input. And so we fully transparent and inclusive with our school committee. And then on February 6th, we had a budget workshop with our school committee. Got some really good feedback, open to the public. Then we updated the budget. Spoke with our folks here and revised some things and tightened it up based on feedback. And then last night, we were at school committee for our public hearing. Tonight, we're here. And Thursday night, we take the show on the road to the advisory committee and then back to the school committee vote to approve on March 8th and the town meeting in April. And then we started all over again. So just diving into a little bit to some of the things I talked about here to give you some examples and visuals. The supplies. So just so we track every request and document everything. When I say that the principals and cost center leaders had to pass in documents, this is an example of something they might type up would be, what's the supply? Is it a consumable? Is it a book? Is it a technology? Is it over $5,000? What's the amount? And then the justification would be in summary form. We have a special one for textbooks. They're a lot more expensive. Obviously, we want to separate them. Are they new or are they replacement? You know, why do we need them? Do we have a plan? How often do we get them? All those questions are asked as we go through the textbook process. And after that, we, I kind of explained this already. We get those documents. Bob and I look at it. We meet with everybody individually, have multiple meetings if we have to. There's a kind of transparent process. There's reasons given. Ultimately, when I make the decisions on what stays in the budget and what doesn't, there's a meeting with those cost center leaders and an explanation given on the why and the reasons behind it. I think that creates good conversations and trust within our leadership teams. They're also able to go back to their teachers and, and department chairs and discuss why or why not things are happening or committed to the budget. And I mentioned this already, but we want to give a plug to our beloved school committee members here. We'll be back with them March 8th. I'm going to turn it over to Bob now, start talking some numbers.
Oh, I'm not, I'm sure that you're, you're all familiar with this document and this was an abridged document from, from Nancy Holt. And she's been invaluable in helping me understand the, the functions within Situate because it's very different than it has been for me in a regional setting. Both in, in organizationally, but even how, how the schools are funded. So the, the big question is how are we able to do all the things that we're doing this year that we weren't able to do previously? And you can see ultimately, we're getting a little over $2 million more from the town as an appropriation, at least at this point, based on the forecast model. Obviously, that still has to be approved moving forward, but that's the, that's the number that we're functioning with at this point in time. So just wanted to share where, where that all comes from. I, I'm sure that each of you, select, select board members are familiar with this. So let's talk a little bit about the details and what we're spending. Comparisons from year to year. I just, I'll go through what, how this is structured so that you, you know what you're seeing and then I'll just focus on those line items that have a significant difference and explain why you're seeing that significant difference. So you've got three years of comparisons. You've got FY22, which was our request. FY21, which is the year we're currently in, and that's the budgeted amount. And then FY20, which is the actual amount where I had actuals. In some cases, it happens to be budgeted amount. You also have the full-time equivalents, the number of staff where there are professionals out, where there are salaries. FY22 and FY21, I did not have the FY20 figures for staffing. But if you look at the school committee's function, you see that there's not a significant difference in the bulk of that difference is in the district clerk's salary. In the superintendent's office, you see a fairly significant decrease in FY21 and FY22 from FY20. And the reason is all of the clerical positions at the central office were categorized in the superintendent's office previously. And the way that we're doing it now is that each person is attributed, each clerical position is attributed to the person that they work with. So the superintendent's administrative assistant is in the superintendent's office. The Assistant Superintendent's Assistant is in their office and so forth. Additionally, you have other district-wide salaries when you go down to 12, 10. And you see an increase there. That's because there is an increase in staff number. There are three people there next year where there have only been two to this point. And that third position is the DEI director that we have budgeted for next year. Business and finance, the significant difference here again is within business and clerical. There was no position budgeted there in FY20. We've increased legal services. We'll be negotiating six contracts next year. So we anticipate there may be some additional costs associated with that. I think everything else on that line item is pretty static. So you can see the totals there. I'm not going to read those to you. But you can see there's a, a little bit of an increase in the bulk of that is due to how figured, how positions were calculated.
Hey, Bob, on that prior screen, there's no salaries under the professional salaries under the superintendent's office?
Correct. Any, any salary line items that were individual people that were one person, I did not include those there. You could certainly do the math and work backwards and, and see what, see what they potentially are. Happy to share those with you offline, though.
But they're in the total?
They're in the total. Yeah, if you, if you add up the, the numbers that are there, they won't total and you can, you can figure out what the difference is.
Okay.
Next, we get to instruction. So within instruction, you've got school leadership. The FTEs in this category are the same. The only difference is that in FY20, assistant principals were lumped in with principals. We didn't do that for this year and for FY22. So you see a little bit of a difference in, in those line items, but not a significant difference in the total. There is a, a large difference in principal supplies. You see it's gone down significantly. The reason it's gone down again is there were a lot of building level supplies that were put into the principal supply line item. We've moved them into general supplies. So you'll see an increase there. So you, you can see your total FTEs are the same and your subtotal has gone down a little less than $100,000 and that's primarily in principal supplies. Going to department heads, again, this is more clerical than anything else. We've not increased the number of FTEs. It is, there are 12 and have always been 12. The other two at the elementary level were categorized elsewhere. So we've, we've added them into the FY22 total so that it is 10, 10 department heads, eight at the high school and two at the elementary level. So you see your subtotal for curriculum department leaders as well. Under Teaching Services, you see teacher salaries. $18,325,806. That is certainly the largest bulk of any line item in this budget. You see that there is one less teacher. We have one retiree that we will not be replacing. All other retirees will be replaced. Special needs teachers, the number is the same. Again, the budget amount is a little bit lower. Some folks retired previously, came in at lower amounts than what were budgeted. So you're seeing that or, or as a difference there. Therapeutic services were a line item. Those, those staff members were originally in special education, lumped in with special ed teachers. Above, they are not there now. We've, we've put them into their own line item. Those would be occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision teacher. BCBA is a behavior management staff would fit into that category. And you can see the points have an increase for next year. That's the point 3OT and the point four speech therapist that we've added in. Substitutes, we've level funded. Paraprofessionals, you can see the number is pretty close to what it was previously. Again, the number is, as FTEs is up by four. Again, it's more categorization. The library paraprofessionals were under library salaries before. Now they are under paraprofessionals. You see a little difference there.
Can you go back to special needs teachers?
Yes.
I, I think you said that you moved people to the proper departments that's more bookkeeping.
Correct.
But the FTEs are the same.
That's probably a mistake on my part as far as the FTEs. My, my apologies for that.
So, so this $450,000 is somewhere else in the budget and these FTEs are, you would guess are lower?
I'm certain they're lower, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, can we, I mean, if we're asking a question, if you go back to the department leader section. So you said that it's, there's still just 10 FTEs?
There, there were always 10. The other two were categorized elsewhere.
And these are, and just, can you just explain more just because I, what exactly are these?
Department heads are, so if there's an English department at the high school, there's one person who is the head of that department. And they have a role, role there and a job description for supervising the teachers in that department. Overseeing curriculum related to that academic discipline. This is supporting the budget, making sure purchase orders are processed for materials. Those are, that's their role.
Got it. So the, so the 200,000, that's just a salary increase. That's not?
The, the 200,000 is for the two elementary folks who were not included in FY20 and FY21 in that line item because they were included elsewhere.
Got it.
Okay.
On the next slide, just a quick question.
On the next slide, just a quick question, I, you know, you, you said that we're, when would the? New lib, like, so the library salaries, and you're set, talking about bringing in, is it a half a? Half a librarian or a whole librarian for the high school? How does that?
A librarian, which is why it's two point O instead of one point five, which is what it was. There's a librarian at the, at the middle school and a half-time librarian at the high school.
Right, but projected cost has gone down significantly, so that I'm in the number.
Because, because you had library aides, you had paraprofessionals.
Oh, you moved them up.
In the library salary. So the, the way that, that.
So the aides are with the paraprofessionals now?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it, in the same line, so we're really, since we're not replacing that one other teacher. For teaching services, we're only up point two.
Yeah, you're really up a little more because you have a nurse um, who is in the nurse line item. And that's a full-time position. So you're not, you're not really down totals, you're, you're up total staff.
Right, I'll tell some, I'm, I mean. I'm just in instructional teaching. Okay.
Yes. Instructional teaching, you have a, a decrease of one teacher basically.
Right.
Academic teacher.
And then two, and then total administrative, we're up three?
No. One.
Just one.
Total administrative. He's returning, he's referring to the categorization where you have the um. You included the uh, in the assistant superintendent line, the. MECO director, the assistant superintendent, and those are current positions and. The third one, the only new one would, would be the DEI director.
You're referring to this line item, Mr. Goodrich?
Sorry, I got three screens going, sorry. Yes.
Yeah, so that, there's one admin, one new administrative position there.
While we're still on page eighteen. So the teacher salaries went from seventeen-one to eighteen-three. And we lost a person. The increase is seven point two percent. How's that happen?
Um, you've got steps and lanes uh, that amount to almost a million dollars.
So the cola is about, I don't know, one and a half, two and a half, somewhere in that range. So there's another five percent increase. Because of steps.
And lanes.
Is that abnormally large?
Um, no. No, it's um, you know, you've, you've got a, a fairly. Uh, experienced staff and given the, the size of your staff. Um, that's not that large a number.
Young though, isn't it? Is that why? I mean, more people.
Is in total are eighty-one percent of this budget. So, you know, as, you know, as people. Move up in experience and attain education. There's the cost associated with that, and this is not, I know you understand that. This is not uh, inordinate as far as a number.
But with the experienced staff, usually they've peaked out and they don't have. As many steps and lanes to go to.
Correct, which is why I'm saying it's not an overly large number.
So what you, what you're saying is it's young staff and they've had steps and stuff to go on.
You. No, what I'm saying is if it were a younger staff, it would be even higher.
Because the veteran staff have capped out at their top step.
Correct. Okay, I'm continuing on with professional development. Basically level funded at eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. Uh, this is a contractual requirement as part of the collective bargaining agreement. Their reimbursements to educators for taking courses. To move their degree uh, from bachelor's to masters or masters to uh. CAGS or, or EDS for doctor. Textbooks, um, see a fairly significant increase there. Uh, there were a lot more textbooks requested, including. Uh, for one particular course, AP psychology, which has three full sections. Of thirty students, so you've got ninety students all needing new books, so. Uh, at about a hundred dollars a book, so it's a pretty significant part of this uh, increase. Library supplies uh, has gone down a little bit, again, just based on requests. And then general supplies went up a little bit. Uh, again, based on requests and, and in some cases, movement of uh, some dollars from other categories. Technology, whoops. Sorry. Technology contractual. Uh, those are Aspen uh, student management system, uh, those sorts of things. That fit into that category, and again, we um. We project that we'll be overspending that this year, so we add an additional ten thousand dollars. Instructional technology, other are supplies uh, like. Print cartridges, mice keyboards, that sort of thing.
Uh, before you go to the next one, under the paraprofessionals. Um, I would have expected the FTEs to be higher. And the budget line to be higher because I thought we moved people into that budget.
The only, the only ones I moved into that budget were library paraprofessionals.
So all the other movements were. Going where?
Where are no other paraprofessionals move?
No, no, but there was, there was things that were lower and you said they, it's just transitioning from one department to another, it wasn't in paraprofessionals?
No.
So two, so we had seventy-six last year, seventy-six this year, two more went in, so we lost two somewhere along the way?
Seventy, seventy-two last year, seventy-six next year, seventy-two this year, seventy. Seventy uh, six next year.
Oh, mine says seventy-six and well, sorry. I'm looking at uh.
Right, and again, that this.
What is this?
Version is a little different than the version you have. Uh, because I went through it again and found some errors.
Okay. Great, I've been looking at mine, not yours, so I'll, I'll look at yours more.
Can we get to um, as a follow-up? Just the entire sheet, I know it's hard because it has to go on the PowerPoint and, and virtually and everything, that's difficult, but. As a follow-up, can we just get the whole spreadsheet as in one file as a follow-up? That'd be great.
Yep, happy to do that. I'll send that to uh, Nancy.
Okay, thanks.
And then the last portion of instruction uh, is counseling. Uh, you see that line item at one point two million, a little bit higher, again, just steps and lanes uh. In that category, guidance clerical. Um, their worst, uh, was a secretary in that line item, they were moved into. Uh, the general clerical under the principals. Uh, in each school, so, well, at the high school, that's where the clerical guidance uh, staff member is. Guidance supplies went up slightly and guidance author. Um, is tutoring, uh, those sorts of things that went down uh, slightly. Psychological services, uh, you can see at six hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight fifty-seven. Um, the difference there is purely lanes and uh, steps. I took a look back at that because it was a, a large number, eighty thousand dollars. Uh, every one of the uh, school psychologists. Has uh, moved along and they were on, on the steps towards the top step at this point. So hopefully we won't see those significant increases moving forward. Now, your total instruction is thirty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Uh, pretty significant portion of your budget.
I, can we, uh, uh, I'm sorry, just, and, and maybe this is for. Um, to pretend to break it, but on the psychological professor salaries. We said, I, I thought you said. I'm confused, I'm just confused about this, if our vision is about providing emotional and. And psychological support. How they're, not only is there no movement, but we're down from FY twenty. To provide emotional support for students coming out of a pandemic, I guess I'm just confused how that reflects.
We're down this year, we're not down for our FY twenty-two.
Right.
Same number of FTEs.
So we're not, so there's zero, we haven't made any adjustments, right, any changes for psychological support for our students? Coming out of the pandemic, I just want to make that clear.
No, the, in, in reality, the, the folks that are usually providing the psychological support. Are adjustment counselors. Um, and we, we've, again, we've not increased the number of adjustment counselors. Um, in this budget either. But those are the folks doing the uh, the, the social emotional support in the buildings. They are doing primarily testing of students to determine. Uh, if they're in the appropriate special education services, if they're receiving the services.
And, and Bob, I'd just like to add to that, that, that is a great question. Um, we feel we have enough staffing, there were, I believe, two or three adjustment counselors, so there was a commitment last year to um. Uh, increase the uh, support in the guidance counseling by adding adjustment counselors. So that all the buildings have one, so I, I think when we, reviewing that and looking at that addition last year. We feel comfortable that we have enough staff to support the students.
I was just trying to be clear. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a good question, Andrew, and uh, yeah, given the time, um, Dr. Dutch, I'm just gonna uh. Let's not go through every line item and, because I think we, the board's already reviewed a lot of it. And I'm sure, and as you can tell, we're not shy to jump in with the individual questions, so.
So I'll skip through these since you've seen them, and if there are specific questions that you have about. A particular line item uh, in the, in the packet you have. Uh, happy to answer that.
Want to go back, go back to the next page that you were gonna go to.
Told ya.
Who wants to ask about the salaries under transportation?
Yeah, that was me, that was, I was going right there, Tony.
The, the reason you're seeing a difference there is that the previous uh, business manager. Took the total salaries, subtracted revenue for fees. And recorded as a line item only the amount uh, that was the, the difference.
Oh.
So where's, where are you counting the revenue?
I'm counting it at the end uh, where it'll be presented to you against our budget, our total budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, we've added a, a nurse, which we've already discussed, okay.
Correct.
Great.
And I bet you're gonna say the same for coaching for athletics.
Exactly, um.
Oh, yeah.
There are fees, fees offset uh, the original amount. And again, the reason to do this was so that we have a, an actual picture of. The cost to run each of these programs. Um, and then transportation was never included in the, in the athletic budget. And it was in a, in a dollar amount that was absorbed uh, in the budget previously. And, and I don't know how.
That was one of my big questions when I saw the athletic coaches, I'm like, what did we do? Get seventeen coaches?
Yeah, no, it, you know.
Okay, that makes perfect sense, that's much better way to do it.
Well, it, it seems, it, it provides more information uh, as far as I'm concerned, so.
But that's more than, is that just coach's salary?
Yes.
So, isn't it typically like? Three or four grand?
No. No, most of the coach's salaries are up uh, around seven thousand, eight thousand dollars.
And Bob, where is the offset? So if your. Budget is forty-four million, the foundation budget. Alright, I guess if we go back up, I'm not seeing.
He's gonna add it at the end.
Oh, alright, I thought I was at the end, that's why I don't, I'm not seeing that this, that this is, the subtraction of.
And in, in athletics, is there, is that a new? Or is this, is that a new FTE or is this another one of those cases? It was ju, it was categorized differently?
Categorized differently, you had a secretary that was placed in with all the other clerical positions. Uh, when she worked specifically for the athletic director.
So is that professional salary, the athletic director and a clerical person?
In FY twenty-two, yes.
Great.
Alright, and we talked about the additional bodies in, in special education. Um, down there.
Yep.
I thought, I, you know, I thought kindergarten costs us a million dollars to run. And the five hundred were, were the fees that we were taking in.
Yeah.
Um, you're, you're looking at ECC, that's the preschool. That's the early child.
I'm talking about when, when, when the schools came in front of us for the. Five hundred thousand dollars for the uh, the COVID, right, to offset. And I thought, I have to go back and check my notes, but I thought the total cost for running full-day kindergarten in the district was up around a million.
That's correct.
Yeah. I think it's more.
Yeah, it's a little over a million, it's mostly salaries. And I think the actual fees, Bob, if I'm not wrong, were close to the five hundred and ten thousand, but.
Yeah, the actual.
We uh, we had. We had sixty in the, in the, in the, in the account already. And what, while we have a slight pause here, I just want to get back to what Mr. Goodrich asked really, because I thought it was a. Good question that I want to just elaborate on a little bit about like the, the net staffing. And I know this, um, Bob's done a real good job of explaining it, you're asking really good questions. Uh, we felt by breaking these things out and putting them uh, in their appropriate places. Not only tells the story, it's more transparent and it kind of. So we'll get, take a little time to getting used to, but if we, if you don't catch anything tonight, we'll certainly be able to answer any questions moving forward. With these, uh, but as far as staffing and the net gain. And we saw that we uh, reduced a, a teacher. Um, we added one administrator in the DEI director, but what we're at, um, a net gain of two point four teachers, which is almost two and a half. With the two point five literacy specialists, the point three um, occupational therapist, therapist. Um, the point six increase in speech. And the one point O nurse, and the point five librarian um, comes to a total of three point four new uh, positions there.
Three point, like, seven or eight, right, total?
No, three, three and almost a half.
Plus the teach, uh. Okay, the first slide said. Well, okay, I'll, I'll go back to.
There's multiple positions, but they're not, some of them.
I know they're half a spot.
Yeah, point three, point five, right, yeah.
So can you go over the one and a half positions under special ed here?
Yes, um, these are administrative positions, um. So the director of special education, the out-of-district coordinator, those were the only positions that were in this uh, line item previously. But you uh. You also have uh, team chairs. Who do the evaluations, they were categorized as teachers previously. Um, so they, they were moved into this line item for that reason. Was their district-wide um, quasi-administrative positions.
Okay. So we didn't really lose a teacher.
You didn't lose and you didn't gain.
Right, so, but, but where we showed the FTEs down. One on teachers, there's really one and a half of them in here.
Special ed teachers, you didn't have a decrease, you had it in.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if they're in the other bucket. You moved them here, they're in the other bucket, previous number would have been higher.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Um, school security, uh. The SRO, that position is static as far as a cost. School security contractual, uh, we did not have any line item there previously. We've incurred costs for. Uh, the camera system, maintenance of, of that system at the high school and the middle school. Uh, and it was, it was elsewhere, um. Now we've put it in its actual line item. line item. The same is true with supplies for school security that would fit into that category. So we go to custodial service and you'll see that the FTs are the same and the increases are minimal. Contractual has gone down significantly. We just based on requests and what we've been able to purchase ahead of time for both supplies and contractual. You can see those decreases there. So there's a little bit of savings. Heating fuels, telephone services, utility services, we've level funded. And then the last thing I'll point out is the extraordinary maintenance. You see, we that's the line item that we mentioned earlier, the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We've added into the budget for any unanticipated maintenance needs. Again, the difference in professional salaries is a categorization. The person who is what is on maintenance, there's there's only one. The other person was categorized elsewhere. So we've we've moved them.
And these tuitions are now don't have the revenue in it?
They do not. Well, the reason there's nothing there for FY twenties because the revenue was running. So.
Why did those two go down dramatically?
I I did put the revenue in for FY twenty one, even though it wasn't there previously, so that you'd have a comparison to look at because I know it's such a significant item. So yes, that number is going down from what was budgeted this year. We don't anticipate that we're going to spend the four point two million this year based on what we spent so far and what we anticipate. The reason it's going down partially, we've got students moving out who we were responsible for that we no longer are. Additionally, there are some students that are twenty two and will be aging out at the end of this year. So we won't have the financial responsibility for them either. So we've we've budgeted the amount that that we anticipate with a little bit of a cushion admittedly, so that we don't have to take from somewhere else or or come back to you. But ultimately, you know, we would like to fund the stabilization fund so that we can budget appropriately here knowing that we have a cushion in that stabilization fund.
That was going to be one of my questions, Bob, was so any surplus is that is that where if that's their surplus, is that where you anticipate funding the stabilization fund? Or is that going to be at the end of the day, you just look at the surplus?
I think it's it it comes from two places, and I think that's to be determined. I think there's more discussion as it relates to funding the stabilization fund. Certainly, if there's surplus at the end of the year, that that should be going into the stabilization fund. But additionally, I thought there was conversation about that being funded either through this budget in a planning process or through free cash on the town side.
Okay, to be determined.
That's a conversation for another time.
Yeah, that's a big conversation. A general question, just looking at custodial services and your extra maintenance. Does how do you account like the whole cares funding? You know, all the extraordinary expenses that were incurred to keep the building safe and clean and the teachers and the students safe. Are those off sheet?
Yeah, they're they're not included in this budget at all. First of all, we haven't finished and it's an FY twenty one revenue and expense, but it it's as I understand it, all on the town side.
Yeah, that's I think so too. So and and in theory, anything going out should be coming in, in theory.
Right. The only the only thing that's not that you're not seeing here are the S R funds, S R one from FY twenty, which was spent and S R two, which is an FY twenty one to FY twenty three expenditure or revenue. We haven't applied for the S R two yet, and we have not planned to use for it as yet. So it's it's not anywhere in this budget.
Okay, so that so I just, you know, I'm sure you guys have thought about, you know, just in the world's different and we may not have cares reimbursements, but we're going to definitely going to need to be vigilant on our 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 protocols for safety as we've now learned, lesson learned. So sure, they'll incorporate that in.
We we will. And that's part of the reason for the maintenance line item.
Yep, great. Okay.
But just can I go back to the sped for one second? So that has historically been the most unpredictable expense. Most of the time going against you, against the school's budget. But it's going down almost two, three, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um. So what happens if two new people move in and they need to go to a school that is a couple hundred thousand dollars?
The the number that you're seeing there already has a cushion in it of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and what what did you do as the circuit breaker stuff?
The circuit breaker is on the revenue side as offsets.
So it just seems to me that this is we've we've gone back to this line item almost every year that I've been doing this. So I would just caution to be conservative on this. I I don't know what the revenue side is, but it's because we're looking at it differently. It's hard for us to to get a full grasp on particularly this this function.
So let me go to the next slide and show you the revenues. So the the top half are grants, including circuit breaker. So you can see that that we've level funded circuit breaker for FY twenty two.
Even though you have a bunch of people dropping out of the program?
For next year, remember where the the money we get in FY twenty two.
For last year, right?
We have this year.
So.
It's always a year behind.
Yep. So next year is going to be a.
Next year may be lower, yes, as far as our revenue for circuit breaker. Again, the the unknown is, you know, and Jim, Jim can clarify and verify. You know, they they make the state makes a commitment that they're not going to touch chapter seventy eight and they're not going to touch unrestricted government aid. So the only places for them to impact and save money should there be revenue shortfalls is regional transportation, circuit breaker, those big ticket items that they have at the state level. So that number may be less than than what we're seeing here because they have shortfalls. It's it's an unknown. The percentage that they're going to reimburse that.
Right. But if you just said that's the only place they can go to get any shortfalls and we're level funding it, is that well, conservative enough?
I don't know the answer to that. You know, I I haven't seen a significant trend, so I don't I can't predict. And I and I don't know if the revenues are going to come in below what they're expecting.
Right.
You know.
But we do know that next year it's going to take a if you know, we're expecting the expenses to go down four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that that's going to go down a third of that.
Correct. Well, some significant amount, yes. Our costs aren't going down a third, but.
No, no, a third of the four fifty.
But ma'am chair, I just have one more comment. If that's okay.
Of course.
First of all, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your different approach in really outlining where the numbers are hitting and then recording the offsets as one line. So I appreciate that. And I'm sure that was a lot of work to kind of figure all that out where all the all the all the movement was within this budget. I did notice, though, that from a fuel aspect that you have level funded that and that concerns me for, you know, sustainability of adding, you know, additional headcount. Because I I'm not so sure that we're going to see our I don't Nancy, what did we factor in for fuel on our side? Did we level fund?
Yes, we level funded as well.
We did?
But it's in our facilities budget, so we have more flexibility there if we need it.
Okay. I mean, that just kind of hopped out to me because I think we're starting to see things increase already.
Yeah, are are you speaking fuel and transportation or fuel in our heating?
I think I was looking at your fuel and heating. I have to go back and.
Yeah, natural gas has has not seemed to fluctuate as much.
Okay.
So I I still feel pretty comfortable with that number. Again, looking at where we are this year, granted, it's it's been mild. It hasn't been a very cold winter. And, you know, the buildings have been empty.
Right.
Fairly significant amount of time. I I would agree with that. But but we're still hitting the the buildings at a minimum, at least.
Right.
So I I think it's a it's it's a number I'm comfortable with. So and then after the grants, you can see the revenue. You'll notice that we did not include any revenue for full day kindergarten. I did include the four hundred and fifty thousand that the town had given us in FY twenty one. And then I returned all of the revenue to pre FY twenty one figures for transportation, early early childhood and athletic athletic fees. Our non resident tuition actually will be higher. It's already higher than that for this year. We just got another payment in, so I'm confident that that number will continue to to rise for FY twenty two as well. So I you can see that the total revenue is forty four million, six forty six, six thirty three, which fortunately matches the expenditures. So you have a balanced budget. Again, I'll I'll go through these quickly. I know it's it's late and this has taken a while, but I I wanted to draw your attention to where the where the dollars go. Seventy one percent of the dollars go directly to instruction and the instruction function. Smaller amounts then to administration, student services, operation and maintenance, and then you can see private school collaborative of which eighty one percent of this budget goes to salaries between custodial, paraprofessionals, teachers, administrators and so on. The increase is little over two million dollars. And I want you to see where those dollars are going. Although sixty percent of that goes to salary increases. The free kindergarten is twenty two percent of the two million dollars. The hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in maintenance is about six percent. And then the additional staff that we're hiring is twelve percent of of that increase. So but that was important for you to to see as well. Bill, I don't know if you want to jump into this.
Again, let us know if we need to quicken up. I'll I'll go quickly. We we thought this was important to show just the what basically, when you break it all down, what each town and surrounding town is paying per child to run their education. And we're right in the middle of the pack here. I think we're we're four out of seven. So that's something you can look at and just it's an FYI for you. And on the right is the other district. I know Mr. McNulty's brought this up. We've had a lot of conversations with our school committee about it. It's a high number for us. The number next to it is the number of students. We also know that fluctuates year to year. But also, if there's if you can create strong programming within your district to meet the majority of the students' needs, we believe we can drive that number down. We do feel it's it's extremely high. So that's that slide. This is just a visual for you to show that the town's support of education has risen on the per pupil expenditures, which is a really good sign. The community in town are committed to education. So over the years, you see that those per pupil spending is going up. So that's a very good sign, and it's not always the case. So we just wanted to share that good news and appreciate and thank you for the to the town and to the community for their support. And just some things that we've been working on this year that we're proud of and wanted to highlight. Our buildings are in the best shape they've been in. And again, that learning from that moving forward, we want to invest in them and protect them with a maintenance program. We believe our return to school plan was transparent, inclusive and comprehensive, and we're continuing to work on that as we try to get students back full time. Our remote learning program is quite different than we saw in March, and that was a charge given to us by the school committee, teachers, community members, parents, kids, that we've really got a pretty robust remote learning model, and we expect to use some of that as we return all students to learning. And then just the goal of being transparent and inclusive in a lot of the communication we do. Our Thursday Thoughts newsletter is pretty comprehensive around the district. We've updated our website. We have an applicant, an app that you could use to get information to make it more user friendly. We've had multiple family surveys, forums, feedback. All will continue to happen so that everyone feels that they're included and have a voice and say of operating the district. And then the next one is maintaining a high level of programming this year in spite of the pandemic, and I think we're accomplishing that. And then the last one is just kind of, you know, working on our culture here in the district and making sure that it firms all children and all adults.
That's it.
Thank you both for such a thorough presentation. I mean, there's, you know, obviously, we could ask you questions all night long and we may follow up with more, but just a couple of things to tee it off. And I know that that my board members are going to want to ask questions. Two things I wanted to just or three things I wanted to ask was in your initial slide, you said that, you know, increased allocation from the town. The percentage that is allocated to town really has not changed. It's that the cherry sheet went up. So we still give, you know, this the allocation of the the pile of money is it the baskets are the same size. It's just that more things came in to put in the basket. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
The cherry the cherry sheet numbers went up, well, went up a little bit from what we anticipated them being last year, because you had anticipated a ten percent previous year, but you also had growth. And you were a little less conservative about the amount of growth that you allocated towards the budget this year. So that that made a huge difference as well.
Yeah, okay. And then the other quick questions I had were I've seen this in other districts that a lot of in not a lot, but a significant amount of families withdrew their kids to homeschool them because why, you know, during the pandemic, why bother kind of thing? But that they could be, you know, once we come back full term, be coming back to the district. Is that going to mess up the numbers at all? And you're I mean, you probably did the productions before all that happened. Or did we even see that kind of phenomenon here in situ?
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, we did. Again, as you saw in our, that's why we shared the the enrollment numbers.
Yeah.
With the majority. So we've been tracking them the best we can. We have lost some students to private schools. Not knowing the district completely yet, not knowing if that's a regular trend. I know that happens annually. Certainly. So we'll keep an eye on that. But I think a lot of it is in the younger ages, and we have counted to bring them back and accounted for that in our in our planning. Yes.
Okay, good. And the last question I had was just you know, the wild card here is, you know, there's talk of the new federal stimulus stimulus package is going to have, you know, allocation for the schools. And I guess we'll deal with that if, you know, it's it'll be a happy problem to have if if there's additional funding. But I I wanted to see if you guys have sort of got a sort of a shadow cabinet working on sort of what that would mean to to the to the district.
We we do have an idea of what what it would mean financially to the. We, we do have an idea of what, what it would mean financially to the district. Everything is, is based on ESER, on the Title I counts. And our Title I counts have gone up in the most recent census. So that, that's helpful to us from a revenue as it relates to that. With that said, we're hearing that if, if the stimulus bill passes as it exists currently, we should expect as a school to see about two times what we saw for ESER II funds. So it would be, be about $600,000.
Okay. I hope we have to figure it out.
That would have to be spent by 2023 as well. So we'd have some time.
Okay. To the board, questions? Ms. Connelly, that box?
Yes, thank you. How many full-time positions are we adding in total?
Three point four.
Three point four?
Correct.
And that includes the diversity director?
Correct.
Okay. And how many positions are we increasing from part-time, we'll call it part-time, to full-time?
Yeah, that's included. So we've got one, two, three, four, five.
So it's 3.5 plus. I guess what I'm getting at is how many actual full-time people are being added to this budget?
Well, there's one full-time nurse is the only actual full-time person. The other one is a culmination of adding, making those other positions whole.
And then adding the diversity director?
Correct. Is one, is 1.0 as well.
Okay. And I guess this is more of a Jim Boudreau question. Where did we come up with 2 million extra dollars?
Well, every year there's, there's, so the, the percentage increase is 5.2%. Typically, it's about half that.
That's what I thought.
Right. So we got it because of the, you know, the, the cherry sheet for the most part, and new growth. New growth was $600,000 higher than we thought, and cherry sheet number was a lot higher than last year because we budgeted so low. So this is a, I think your point is this is kind of an anomaly, right?
Very much so.
Yep.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm all in favor of full-time kindergarten free. And I'm not, I'm not saying we don't need, you know, a lot of positions, but on the town side, I don't think we added a lot of people, no people really, that I'm aware of. And did, didn't we pretty much level fund the town side of the budget with some contractual increases, but not, not much more than that? I'm just curious.
I mean, we added a part-time position, clerical position for facilities department because they have no
Right.
position at all. We added the new chief of cooking chef, whatever you want to call it, at the council on aging.
Right.
And we put additional hours into custodial help to cover some of the new buildings. The only two new positions I think, Nancy, were the council on aging and facilities.
Correct.
And neither one of those are full-time.
Correct. One's 25 hours and the other is 18 hours.
Anything else, Karen?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Goodrich?
So I just, I wanted to say thank you to the team. I mean, having this sort of transparency to try to understand pointed questions, but it's a labyrinth of, of complexity to go through. So thank you for laying it out in this way. I know it is a bit different, so that's why we're trying to figure it out. I guess my question is kind of going back to the chairwoman's concern about enrollment. It's a 20-year trend. In 20 years, the town has lost over 9% of our students. So that, and the new census coming out, I mean, what? Is the budget increases, but we're losing 9%? I mean, what, what are our thoughts here on? I mean, we can't bring more people in, but I mean, what are your thoughts on how enrollment is down so much? And are we losing people to VoTEC? Is it private schools? What's going on? Really, in your mind, that we're, we're down so much?
I think the, the private schools is a concern of mine. That's something that I've definitely noticed is a, is a trend, whether it's my brother went there, so the family goes there and that, there's some of that. But that's something that stuck out to us in looking at this, but also just in daily conversations with people. So that's something we need to address, find the root of that problem. And I think that's a big, that's a big part of it that I'm seeing is the private schools. And this year, you know, a little bit of the anomaly with the pandemic and the kindergarten ECC, but besides that, I think the biggest issue, the other thing is out of district. I think we're, we're, we're high there as well. Those are our students, but private school would probably be my, my number one concern.
Is it more than 10% Bill?
No.
Because that's always been a, that's been pretty consistent for like 20 years that it's around 10%.
Yeah, I just, I think it's high for districts I've been in. I just think it's a high number. Maybe, maybe, you know, it's because people can or not, but I, I think if we continue to improve the quality of our, our education, the goal is to get more kids to stay and more families to stay.
The only thing I'd add to that is it's based on development too. You know, if you get, if you get that, you know, we had a 55 and over big development go in that didn't have any kids. All of a sudden, you know, if that apartment complex goes in back and behind the town forest, you're going to see a big upsurge and then, and some of these other things. So, you know, when Walnut Tree came in, whenever that was, you know, 15 years ago, that brought 400 kids into the system. And these bubbles kind of come and go based on developments. So.
Anyone else have questions on the school department presentation that I, I really do commend you this? There's a lot of information synthesized quite well and we appreciate it. And there's more detail we have in our backup that we can dig into.
Yeah, just.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to wrap up and, and say like everyone else, so thank you for putting this together. You know, as Karen mentioned, it's a unique year. Good, good to start out on where you have a nice, nice increase. And I really applaud you taking a bold step to get rid of the cost, the kindergarten cost. You know, that's, that's bold, and I think it's a good thing for the community. And I think the next thing is the bus fees that was increased before that as well. So you know, it is, as everybody knows, it's a single line item budget. We have no really control over it or any comment. I mean, we have comments to it, but we don't have any, any ability to affect it. And and it looks well laid out. So I hope, you know, I hope it all comes to fruition and that you know, that it turns out as good as it looks. So, good job.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, Tony. Any, any other questions, comments? Great. And I'll just remind everybody that, you know, I think it's been great that about once a month, Jim and the superintendent and myself and the chair of, of the school committee, as well as Mr. Vignani and Ms. Brendelini are meeting. So that when we, you know, so that we're not, neither side surprised if something comes up. And I think that's been a good initiative too. We've met twice and we all have our to-do list. So that's great. Great. Well, gentlemen, thank you for staying up late with us and for the presentation. If there's no other business, I will move that, that we take a five-minute break because we are past three-hour mark and I need to stand up for a second.
Can I just say one more before we, I just wanted to thank you all. I'm, thank you for your patience. This is a whole new system for you to look at. I understand that. Your questions were excellent and we'd be happy to, I know your, the time was of an issue tonight, but we'd be happy to answer any other detailed questions you have moving forward. So take your time, look at it. We want to be as transparent as possible and on the same page. But I want to thank you all. Thanks to Jim and Nancy for all their hard work and helping us learn the new system and get acquainted to the town. So we appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Good night, gentlemen.
Night.
So it is now 9:49. If we can reconvene at, oh, 9:50, at 9:55. It's still today, and we will hopefully get through the rest of our agenda. Sorry to everyone that keeps waiting, but you know, town business is town business. Talk to you soon.
Hello.
Mr. Hickey, I should have asked you to just put on your pajamas at this point. All right. We we're almost, we're almost reconvene. Thank you for the break. Got my tea.
That's why I couldn't hear anybody. All right. Waiting for Ms. Connelly and Mr. Boudreau. And then I think we're all, oh, yep. I thought Jim had gone to the beach. Okay, I apologize for the late hour. You never, you know, that's the, the joy and mystery of these meetings is you never know how long a conversation is going to have to go. So while we're waiting, one more member to come in. The we do have the South Shore Regional Vote Tech discussion. I honestly personally look forward to this every year because I, I think the program's phenomenal and, and the work that you give us is, the, the, the information you give us is always so thorough. So I will say that we have a very thorough package. And given the late hour, I, I, I don't want to give you the, the short shift, but I will let you lean on, on the fact that I know that my board has reviewed the documentation. So I think we're all here now. We all are here. So I'd like to reconvene and invite the next item on our agenda, which is technically speaking, the South Shore Regional Vote Tech 310, which is in our budgets, and debt authorization article. Everyone ready?
Yes.
Okay, I will turn it over to you. Is it, I always forget, is it Dr. Hickey? I want to have the right salutation.
Tom will do fine.
Tom, I will turn it to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Jack Manning, your representative to our school district, sends his regrets tonight. I'm joined by our, our district treasurer, Jim Coughlin, as well. I will, I appreciate you reviewing the materials that we've sent in advance. I, and I always appreciate the questions and feedback that you provide. I will, I'll be brief and focus on a few items. I'm very proud of the work that we've done this year amidst the pandemic. Most of our kids are in, are still in school most of the time. You probably know we run on an alternating week schedule. Nearly all of our students are able to be in full-time for their shop week and are either in two or three days in person on their academic week. We're able to design a split schedule, so we run buses twice in the mornings and twice in the afternoons. And we were able to get a waiver from the state, and that has allowed us to maintain all of the safety protocols. So with a reduced day in a hybrid model, but nearly full-time shop, we've, we've been able to make things work. As you can imagine, remote carpentry doesn't work very well for very long. So everybody, the students, the, can't say enough about the staff, our custodians and parents. It all comes down to us working together. And if you have the sniffles, stay home. And if, and if, and if folks follow that, we're, we're in good shape. So I'm pleased with our progress thus far. I come to you tonight for two reasons. Normally it's to talk about just the budget. I come to you tonight for two reasons. Normally it's to talk about just the budget, but I'd like to reserve some time to talk about the, the debt authorization article that I've, that I've shared some information with you on. So our fiscal 22 budget proposal has the entire budget going up 1.89%. Situates enrollment to the school is down one student and we're seeking $574,126, which is a reduction of $16,687 or 2.82%. The biggest drivers in this year's budget are really in, in capital, the dot, we, we moved a lot of dollars around to try to tackle one more signature capital project within an annual budget cycle. And that's to replace some windows in our, in our 1992 edition. From an instructional point of view, the pandemic has pushed us into a one-to-one device model. We were very proud of the fact that we had Chrome cards in almost every classroom and we were able to provide those devices to students. COVID has led us to an area where many other school districts have been, and one of our priorities is to basically maintain a one-to-one device model. So some of our supply increases are going to be on making sure that that can stand the test of time going forward. Our other, our other big increase on the instructional side for supplies was a, we're on a, we're on a six-year cycle with replacing some history textbooks. In terms of personnel, we're making some small strategic adjustments. I have an English learner instructor who's on our Title I grant. Last year I moved 10% of the position onto the budget. Looking to make that, move an additional 20% onto the budget. I have a horticulture aid position that we fund on a federal Perkins grant. That program is now in its fourth year of existence, a horticulture landscape construction program. We'll be graduating our first crop of seniors in June, and so we're looking to move that position. And also the, the budget would hold some funds for us to support our allied health program. As you may know, we have a vocational program where students spend a lot of time out on clinical, clinical rotations. And we follow Department of Public Health guidelines. In discussions with the department, having an LPN involved in the program will allow us to respond to the popularity of the program and have adequate supervision on, on clinical sites. So in a nutshell, I see this as, on an operating side, very lean, but still maintaining all of our, our core services and not undercutting our mission. The budget assumes that we are, we are back to normal. Our biggest driver for whatever normal is going to look like really comes down to the kids eating lunch. If they have to be six feet apart, then that actually I've, I, I think that's probably the final bottleneck. The transportation guidance will, would certainly help. And even if I could put more kids on buses, I still am using our only gymnasium and our cafeteria and running five lunches. So let's, let's hope we're in a better position so that that would be the final significant obstacle. But from a budgeting point of view, we're not, this budget does not include additional funding for, for running a COVID-style year. If, you know, we're also eligible for federal ESSER money. We also are, you know, through Jim and, and Nancy and the town. We, we get our Plymouth County Cares reimbursement funds through, through the county and have to pass them through the town with, with documentation. So I'll, I'd be happy to pause here before talking about the debt authorization piece, if I could answer any questions regarding the assessment request or what led to that.
I have some great, I had no questions. It was really a great presentation and very thorough. I, I reserve my questions for the capital side. Does the board have any questions about the operational? It's great. Now, it's, it's, it's great programming you do. It's, it's just, every kid that I know that has come through from situat is just, you know, they can't speak enough about the, the course and the programming there, so.
Thank you. And I've, I've been, I've had the good fortune of saying for, this is the, would be the 10th budget I've been able to present to you. And we have always found great cooperation from Situ Republic Schools in helping all of the children in the middle school figure out what their range of, of options are. We feel very much a part of the community, so thank you for that.
Yeah. Well, there you go. Mr. Goodrich?
Very quickly, just want to clarify, there is, there is no waitlist as of now. And do you envision, nothing gets me more upset than to hear that there could be a waitlist, some student who wants to go can't go. But we're not, you're not in that position yet. Is that right? I just want to.
Historically, there has been a modest waitlist. Where we are right now because of COVID is that we're about two to three weeks behind on our admissions process. So by Thursday or Friday of this week, we will be sending out first round admissions to all of our in-district communities. I anticipate that we will fill our freshman class with all in-district students. So that by the middle of March, and by that, that would equate to about 160 students. So I could give a more accurate answer on the waiting list, but from what I'm seeing for, from completed applications, I would say on paper, we probably have about 220 applications for about 160, 160 slots. So mathematically, you know, oftentimes, well, I would say 10 to 20% of the time, we will offer admission to a child who would then, who then will decline. So it, I can't automatically say the waitlist would be 220 minus 160. But in the last several years, we've had a modest, a, a, a small waiting list, yes. We have increased our recruitment efforts to, to, to show students that if we do have spaces in our programs in grade 10, sometimes we have students leave at the end of grade nine. And we want to be able to say that it's not a one, it's not one shot. You, you have to know what you want in grade eight or else, sorry. And so we've, we've had good fortune to find great matches of students in programs where we may have space in grade 10 as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I just, I want to make sure to support, you know, any of our students who want to go, they can, you know, anything we can do, so I.
I, I, I appreciate you saying that. This, this would stretch my timeout, but it, it does actually segue into the debt authorization regarding lack of space. The, 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 the fiscal 21 budget that the legislature passed finally in December includes a $15 million grant for expanding vocational technical schools, which I'm paying very close attention to, that it's maybe the only source of money for brick and mortar improvements outside of our friend MSBA. And so I, I would love to be able to come back and tell you that we were competing for those dollars. I've alerted our entire legislative delegation to the program that doesn't even exist on paper yet, but I just want people to know this is our, this could be an opportunity for us to get some additional funding. Another way of getting additional funding is to borrow money, and that is the, that is the subject of the debt authorization article.
Well segued.
Here we go.
Take it away.
Thank you. So for several years now, as part of my presentation to advisory and to the Board of Selectmen, I have talked about our infrastructure needs. In 2018, we, we worked with an engineering firm to put together a facilities master plan, to basically have an outside firm come in and tell us, not just tell us what we want to hear, but to validate our expenses. And I am sure that for some members of the board, I would have sent you electronic documentation. It's on our website as well. What I would have said a year or two ago is that eventually we will reach the end of the capital items that we can sustain within one annual budget cycle. And absent this window project that I mentioned a moment ago, which hopefully we will do this summer, we are now getting into categories of infrastructure repairs and expansion that we would never put in a single budget cycle because it would croak the assessments. It would, it would just balloon the, the capital line in one year. And so we'd want to be very methodical about it. So the ask of our eight communities, of which we would need all eight communities to support us, is to say, we have, we have a rationale for the upcoming needs through our facilities master plan. So this number, this 18.9 million dollar number, first of all, the intention is not to borrow it immediately on day one. Even with favorable interest rates, we would not have the ability to take full advantage of doing all that construction at once. The other rationale though is because we have to go to eight communities, we're hoping that if we explain what we need and it's well documented, we still will have an obligation year to year to bring you one assessment number of which debt service is a part of it. Ironically, this year fiscal 22 that we're proposing, there is no debt on the books. We have rolled off our 2010 roof project a little early and where, so, so there would be one year with no debt. If you ask me how we would phase it in, I could definitely provide some recommendations, but at the end of the day, and I'll, and I can have Jim speak to this in a little more detail, whatever we do at the, the regional school district level, situates share of any debt that it's authorized in fiscal, within the confines of fiscal 21, a vote, if you will, spring town meetings would be 7%. And so if I were in your shoes or in advisory committee shoes, I would listen to what I just said and say, okay, that's good. You're not going to do it all at once. You seem to have a plan. But what is my maximum exposure if you did? And, and Jim, Jim can speak to that a little bit. So you know, the absolute largest amount of exposure, if we were to borrow it all immediately, and then I can walk that back a bit and say, here's what I think we'll be doing going forward.
Yeah, the 7% Tom mentions in our, in our regional agreement, there's a, there's a methodology for borrowing. And what happens, and similar to the, the package you got tonight, which how we, how we assess our individual towns, debt is, is something that is, even though there's nothing in fiscal 22, our debt is based upon the three prior years of attendance at the time that the vote was, was made. So if our vote is made in fiscal 22, which that's the plan right now, the attendance from 21, 20, and 19 from all of our towns would be, you know, averaged out and that number comes out to 7% for situat. So in situat's trend, I believe it went from 45 to 31 to 30. So you're, we do have a minor decline over the last three years. So again, that supports situat a little bit on the, on the percentage breakdown. And again, with that, we've done projections again, based upon the timing. And the high mark of year one would be about another $111,000 of, of exposure for situat over and above the, the regular assessment. If, 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 if everything goes through. Again, a lot of it based upon the 18.9 million Tom mentions is timing. We can't all, most, a lot of the projects will, will have to be done while the students aren't in the building. So the timing of all of that, it will be staggered. So we're not really sure what's going on, but just as a maximum exposure that, that right now, based upon projections would be situat's exposure in year one of the debt would be $111,000.
And on a, and on a practical, short-term level, if I would say to you that in fiscal 23, the number one priority is a roof replacement, which we're, which we're estimating at about $1.8 million. And so as, when, when we get together to talk a year from now about fiscal 23, if we get the debt authorization approval from our communities in the spring, we already have funds this year for design. We have an OPM and an engineer. So to be able to, to be able to keep a momentum going forward with various projects is, is also key, as, as Jim pointed out. We're also, we're also estimating, again, I could, I, I, I put together a more detailed memo on our website, which I can certainly send to Jim and Nancy, that just for, for your file, that breaks down some of the major categories. But I think ventilation is another major category. Not having a fire suppression system in our original 1962 building. The good news in all of this, which I, I look forward to bragging about, is the fact that as part of the cost estimates, we actually reduced the overall number after we added in inflation and soft costs, because there are some projects that our kids can work on. And, and our engineer advised us that based on, based on rewiring the infrastructure, the lighting for, for, for just our original footprint, that we could probably save about $993,000, cutting the labor costs in half by doing intermittent electrical improvements. Now, we would need a design and we'd have to be part of a bigger picture, but the fact that we can have students doing that work, the fact that we could add on five or 10,000 square feet to our building footprint in a couple of strategic areas. And after paying an outside contractor for the concrete and the steel that our carpentry and electrical and HVAC and welding programs could then take an entire school year and build the inside of it has allowed us to estimate new construction at about $325 a square foot. So these are, these are big numbers, certainly taken all at once. The other strategy here is that we continue to be a polite pest with MSBA and we have applied annually since 2015. Earlier today, I spent, I spent a chunk, I spent a chunk of my morning doing a, a masked virtual senior study walkthrough, American Idol audition. I'm pretty sure it's more interesting, but because they're not coming out to schools, they asked us to do a video of, of our, you know, our tale of woe where we have infrastructure issues. So that's what we'll be sending them. So we, we've been told that we're one of 30 schools that is, that is under consideration. Now, we've been told politely no in the past. And so we want to be able to take control of our destiny so that we continue to have a well-maintained building. We want it to, we want to work towards modernization where we can. But we don't want to be so aggressive as to, as to say, look, if MSBA invited us three months from now into their core program, we would call a timeout and we would have to ask ourselves, okay, we know it's several years from invitation to shovel for whatever the project might be. So we really have to prioritize the projects that our kids or staff deserve to have in the form of roof that doesn't leak or ventilation that isn't 1962 Univents and space, which, which we've got well documented. Now, the, the engineers, you know, if you, if you ask an engineer to build you the Taj Mahal, they'll do it and they'll tell you how much it's going to cost certainly. And we, we had some wonderful, they did some wonderful work, but we're not ever going to be able to spend $52 million to add on 40,000 square feet and without MSBA around, you know, and that, that number comes from the facilities plan in the visioning section. That's the, from the nonfiction section to the fiction section maybe of, of the report. But, but a targeted expansion would provide immense breathing room. Because along with Mr. Goodrich's question about waiting lists, there also is a secondary type, type of waiting list about program demand. So when I tell you that 40 freshmen wanted to be in our electrical program, they got in, they got into the school. They wanted a construction program and when 40, 49th graders said they want electrical and we still only have space for 17, or maybe we, maybe we, we, we take down that storage area and we make it another booth and we make it 18. We want, we want to be able to not just add on, but we want to also renovate and reallocate some space so that the programs that have a strong labor market, the programs that have a strong student demand and the programs that have heavy equipment can be in the spaces that they deserve to be in. When that addition in 1992 was built onto our school, our graphic communications program was a very printing-heavy program. And so they made the right decision then to design a program in this big cavernous space, which I look at in a, in a 2021 version and say, graphic design isn't what it was. And so we've got to adapt and we need to show our communities that we're going to make the best use of our space. So for right now, this authorization merely gives our district the permission that as we build annual budgets, that we have the, our town's support, knowing that at the end of the day, if we come to you with a number that's unaffordable and we say, yeah, but, but remember, you know, we had all the debt that we have all these things we want to do. At the end of the day, your answer could be, nope. You're going to have to adjust your operating budget. So we're not going to put ourselves in a position to bring budget assessments in the future that are so debt-heavy that they drag down the operating part. That's the unique, it's, it's a blessing and a curse, maybe, that we bring you, we bring you one number. Now, obviously each community is different in terms of their share of the debt and what their economic situation is. And those, we, we have those conversations, but we try to lay out the same facts for everybody. So this spring, as there, as the state law dictates, our school committee would, if our school committee voted to, to move that, start this process, it would start a 60-day clock ticking. After a regional school committee votes to incur debt, it has to notify the Board of Selectmen within seven days of the vote. And there's a 60-day window that the town can either take no action, which becomes a yes, or place it in front of their voters, which is obviously, we want to make sure that all of our communities, with your earlier town meeting, all the way to Cohasset's town meeting in late May, maybe Abington's town meeting in early June, we want to make sure that everybody has the convenient option for placing it on a warrant. And I thank Jim and Nancy for their help in, in making sure that placeholders and your protocols, that we're following your protocols, you know, to, to do that smoothly. So while I'm talking to you about this as if it was, is a given, technically I've asked our committee to delay taking an official vote so that we can ensure that it's going to fall within that, within that 60-day window. And like I said, from there, if we get the authorization, we would probably be making a plan and building and building in some debt service for a fiscal 23 ask that we, we would be talking about, you know, a year from now. I think that's enough monologue. Thank you.
That's great. Before we dive into the, into the, in the specifics, I believe in the past that our town has joined in a, in a letter in support for the MSBB, whatever the letters are. I believe in the past that our town has joined in a, in a letter in support for the MSBB, whatever the letters are. Yeah. And I would think that, that that would be something that this board would entertain as well. If you need that for your application for next round.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that we've done that before. I will open it up to the, to my colleagues. Lot of information. We've, you know, some of you have, have, you know, seen this presentation in various iterations before. So I will open it up for questions or comments. Karen Connelly.
Um, just a question, are regional school districts in a different bucket than the individual school districts? And within that, if within the regional category, are VOTEC schools in yet another category as a subset of regional? Or are you just all competing for the same money?
All competing for the same money.
I know last year we were at the MS, the Master of Municipal Association meeting and the regional school districts were complaining bitterly being treated unfairly by MSBA. And that was over a year ago, but I remember distinctly that there was, I was in a session where they were very upset. So.
I think the challenge is the penny on the sales tax, economic downturns. You, you, you folks are well, well aware of all of that with, with money for gates and whatnot. And it is a challenge. And so in the vocational community, we have, you know, some of our advocacy helped lead to that grant program I mentioned before, $15 million isn't, it isn't much, but it certainly is something. And it's a question of should economic development legislation and, and bonding outside of MSBA be a pathway to modernize? So we're the, we're the second oldest regional vocational school in, in the Commonwealth. And the story, the, the story goes that it was massive, you know, federal state funding. It wasn't, it wasn't our small communities back in 1959 and, and elsewhere, building these schools. And the question is, is it, you know, how, how do we, so how do we help schools as they're aging into, you know, 50 plus 60 years? So yeah, it, it is competing for scarce dollars.
Other questions, Mr. Vignani?
Just a quick question. Tom, how long is that debt for? So that additional $110,000 for situat is up for 20 years?
The, the, the way that Jim has the hypothetical built is for 20 years. And, and Jim, did you use three and a half percent as a?
Three and a half percent was based, based upon our, the, the bond people that we deal with on a regular basis. They, they gave us a safe range as far as what to use. I know that earlier tonight.
Give that to Nancy. She'll get it down to nothing.
Couple hours ago, I heard you talking about less, you know, less than half a percent. So that would be nice. But I've bought, the people we've spoken to, the bond said three and a half would be, and would be a safe estimate to, to use moving forward right now.
The other question I guess is the seven percent is based on the past three years and our attendance is going down. So it doesn't really work in our favor. You know, if we did it based on a shorter period of time, I'm sure, I'm sure we're less than that now. I don't know. Is that just the standard practice going back three years from the time of death?
Yes, it, it, the, the way that our regional agreement is written, so the same thing Tony would have happened in, in fiscal 11, when we, when we got, we would have done the same process back in 2010. $3 million roof project through MSBA accelerated repair. We go to our eight towns with the same Warren article. We ask for, we ask for authorization. And it was, and it was, it was a three-year look back, whatever, whatever the numbers were then. So you're right, the, the three-year average, I think the, I think the rationale behind that is again, to, to try to balance things off. But you're right, there could be, there could be trends when a decision is made. If this, if this had come up in, you know, for, for fiscal 20, we probably would have had a year where Situate had 45 kids factored in versus the 30s. But, but you're right, it is, the timing does obviously make a difference, but it is a standard three-year look back.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Ms. Karen?
Thank you and thank you, Tom. Just as a follow-up, I mean, a big supporter of VOTEC. Just because I'm tired. So the additional $111,000, you're not requesting for fiscal year 2022, correct?
Correct. That is, that, that number is if, if we borrowed every penny of it for the, for July 1st, 2022, and we had to build Situate's share into the fiscal 23 assessment, that would be the number 20 years at three and a half percent. So that's, that's the high watermark, most aggressive approach. And anything else would be less than that.
Nancy, would you like to add to this? Conversation? Because I know you have thought a lot about this.
I have, but I, I think Tom and Jim have always been excellent stewards of the maintenance of that building and how to best insulate the communities for any improvements. So I think this is just another example of, of them doing just that.
And as we mentioned in prior budget presentations, we've been, we've, we've taken advantage of the Situate solar field for the last six years, which has saved us tremendous amounts of money over the, over the national grade retail prices. So we, we, again, we appreciate all the work Situate has done to help us over the past years as well.
I'm sure we could write that on the new roof. No problem. Put a drone up there, it'd be perfect.
Why don't you just start a roofing program and some of the kids up there to do the roof?
That's great. Yeah, I love the partnership. It's a great program. And so this evening we are asked to, we, we're just reviewing the, the budget and we do, do we have a motion regarding the debt?
I think so.
Say here somewhere. Anybody else find it? Got. Are there further questions or comments I should appropriately ask?
There's no motion for this.
Okay, no motion. But we are required this evening to make a motion? No, Nancy?
No, it's, it's, it's on the warrant. So is, you've already approved it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll vote on, we'll vote technically whether or not the board supports it on the ninth, when we go through all of the Warren articles. Okay. All right, thanks. I was confused because I think it said vote on the agenda. And at this point, I'm just doing what I'm told. Great. Oh, actually right, there is no vote on there. That's great. I, I, you know, I, I'm going to, next, next year, let's put you on earlier in the evening. Because I, I think having a wider appreciation for what you offer to our students is, is always a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying up with us. Late, it's still today.
Every time you go to the golf course, our new status check was constructed by the VOTEC last year.
There, I can point to so many things around town. Our, our fish, our fish bait bike rack at the library, one of the coolest things in our town. Yeah.
Building at the marina, yeah.
Yeah.
Very, very, very happy about that.
Some archiving in the building department?
Jim wants a shoe shed at the town hall. Great. Well, thank you so much for your leadership and for, for your presentation. We, we did, as always, and, and if the public would like to see the presentation, we do have that available. So. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okey dokey. Is Chris Karshia still awake? We do have on the agenda, I tried to text him to see if he was still around. Chris?
He is here, yes.
Hello. Oh, no, it's.
Am I unmuted now?
You are. You're not going to show your face?
No, I don't have a camera.
Oh, all right. Well, so the next thing on our agenda is, you know, another small item, our capital, our capital plan. Which, you know, we've all had ample time to review. It's Article 3 on our warrant. And you know, for the board, many of these things have been on the five-year plan for a while and it's their turn. But I will let you, Mr., since you've managed to stay with us this long, would you like to go through this or do you want to talk about this another night?
Go through it, go through it as a relative term. I, I set a world record for committee meeting length by having, by doing this all in under 45 minutes.
I heard, I actually heard about that and I was, I was being chastised because it's now 10:30 and we're still here.
So like I said, I could be.
Put us to shame, put us to shame, Chris.
There were, you know, $15,870,000 in capital request this year. I don't know if you have the pie chart that Nancy did that breaks it down by funding.
I, yes, we do.
Okay. So you see all the different funding. Let me start off, I have a, I have a written statement.
Please.
I have the unfortunate task of reporting the passing of one of our members. Mike Clark passed away February 17th from prostate cancer. He was a newer member. He came on in 2019. I actually met him in arguments on Facebook. And he had a fantastic point of view and I said, come join us on capital planning. I want your point of view. He was great while he was there. His knowledge and his presence will be greatly missed.
Thank you for mentioning that. We, we should have at the top of the hour. Yeah, that was a sad thing.
Yeah, he, he fought for a long time. He'd been fighting prostate cancer for a long, long time. He kept it quiet up until this past year. But yeah, he fought the good fight.
Well, I think it's important to note too, that not only was he on capital, but he also is on Conservation Commission as well as the Water Resource Commission. So, you know, since we're talking about it now, you know, Mike had a great independent, independent point of view to your point, Chris. So very sad to hear, hear it. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. I, I knew he was on other departments. I didn't know which ones. So anyways, due to COVID restrictions on meetings and whatnot, we did things a bit differently this year. Each member individually reviewed their capital plan book, you know, the big folder. And at our January 12th meeting, we basically went through the list, invited comment on anything that the members had to comment on. If any of you, and most of you have been to my meetings, there's usually a lot of cross-talk and chatter and we run about three hours every night. We kept this one down to moments. Everybody was on point. There was a little general back and forth, details and clarifications from Nancy and Jim. And at that point, we were able to vote on the recommendations from the town administrator. It was unanimous to recommend as submitted by the town administrator. If we want to go into details, we can. And like I said, there was very little, everything was checking the boxes as far as their equipment replacements, their technology requirements and just necessary projects that, like you said, have been in the works, you know, in the books for a few years now. I don't think there was, there were no surprise projects that I remember.
Yeah, so. Right, sorry.
Were there any last minute, yeah, were there any last minute add-ons? I don't, I don't even think there were.
No, there weren't any last minute add-ons.
Yeah, so the process works, you know, there's a five-year rolling plan and, and a prioritization. And I just want to note that the bulk, almost 78% of the funding is through various enterprise funds, which shows the, you know, the line share of this is investments in sewer, water, sewer and water are the biggest. Which have always been the priority, well, been the priority for the last few years. So, Chris, well done. I think you're good. I, I, I move that Chris runs our next meeting. Are there any questions about the proposed capital budget or the process or the recommendations from capital? Nope. Oh, Mr. Vignani?
Just one question on the street sweeper. Is that a new one or a replacement? Not, not a replacement vehicle. Is it a, a new one to our fleet or it is one failing?
We have, we have one, one failed, yes.
So it's a replacement?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, it's the late hour, but I love the idea that we have a street sweeping fleet. Okay, so I will just note that the largest line items on here is the INI for Oceanside from the Sewer Department, which is 4.9 million, which is designed to free up capacity in our plant, which will help bring other areas in town onto the sewer. 2.7 for a new water tank, which we've been discussing for years. It's, it's greatly needed. And 3.3 for the construction of the Dolan Field Well, which will increase our water capacity. So those are the, the big, three biggest ticket items on the list and the rest will be in the warrant. Any other comments, Chris? Oh, Mr. Vignani's fingers up.
One more question. Nancy, on the funding of this, where is the the override? For, is it, when do we start? The sewer project on Cedar Point, where's that revenue?
So the, the Betterment portion?
Yeah.
That was already approved at a special town meeting, so it's no longer on the, on the capital plan.
Oh, so this $4.9 million is not part of that?
No, this would be to, to line the.
Oceanside.
Yeah, on Oceanside.
Yeah, Tony, that's been identified as an area that might actually create enough capacity for North Situate.
Yes.
Our friends.
They're actually doing that study right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, we may have to replace the whole sewer like we did on Cedar Point.
I mean, we're hoping not. It's a, it's a pretty large transmission line that goes through there. It's much bigger than what's out on Cedar Point in terms of the size of the pipe.
I didn't know that we had made that leap yet. Okay.
Any other questions? Great. Chris, anything else you want to add?
I think we're good. We've got two vacancies now. We had one other member leave. So if you know anybody that wants to, you know, try the capital planning route to step into town government, let me know or let the town, oh, what's?
Moderator.
Moderator, no, town moderator.
Great. Yeah, Chris, at some point, totally not related to this conversation, but because we're, it's late and you're online. Can we talk? Because one of the things that Charter Review is doing is looking at the appropriate roles of, of various committees. So I'm going to be giving you a call about that.
Absolutely. More than happy to talk about that.
All right, appreciate it. And thank you for your service. How many years you been on capital?
This is, make, this is rolling up on my ninth year.
I thought so. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank, thank you.
All right.
Good night.
All right, good night.
All right, so 10:38 this evening and we are done with new business. Our old business and the one and only item is to review and discuss and possibly vote on wind turbine issues. So let me just advance my backup here. Okay. So to remind the board, we met, last time we met on this subject, the board instructed Mr. Bedrow to work with Situate when to look at various potential mitigation options, because the board wanted to find ways to find relief for residents negatively impacted by the operation. So we assigned Mr. Vignani and Mr. Goodrich to do that. They diligently went out and sought information about the various scenarios that we discussed, which were, you know, everything from, you know, expand, slightly expanding the current mitigation to, to a full shutdown in the evening or all year round. Those were, I think, were the, were the, the two, two things. The board has since received their results of their information, of that information. And our, our task this evening is to continue the conversation now that we know what those parameters look like. So I believe everyone has that data. I would ask, it is, I, I'll, I'll throw it over to Mr. Vignani, Mr. Goodrich, if they wanted to just, you know, flesh out sort of the research that you guys did before we get into the meat of it. Who wants to start?
Andrew, you want to start?
I mean, I, I, I think it's pretty.
I mean, I, I, I think it's pretty, um, self-explanatory, there's kind of, uh, a menu of options, uh, presented. Uh, going from either, for, for, for different ways of, uh, mitigation, for the lack of a better word. Um, and there's, you know, a financial, um. Impact for each one. You know, and. For, for, you know, from flicker, all, from one, just going from just a, a flicker. To a year-round, um, overnight shutdown, so there's kind of, there's kind of these variables. And so it gives us kind of a. A different way to kind of look at all the different sorts of options. So, just flicker, just sound, just time-based, uh, and those options, those five different kind of options are, are, are presented. Tony, I don't know if.
Yeah, the, I mean, the only thing I'd add is, we had a, a meeting with, with the group again, and we kind of pondered what other options there are out there. Nothing new came to the table, um, and we just asked them to kind of give us the financial model based on the historical data on five different scenarios. Um, so we could bring it back to the board, and that was all based on the board's prior discussions about. What we wanted to look at, um, and just to summarize them quickly. We kind of broke it down into, well, the, the first category is what's the expense for the flicker? The second one is what is shutting it off in the summer? Um, from any direction, what is shutting it off in the summer? From the westerly direction, what is this shutting it off year-round from any direction, and what is, it's shutting it off year-round from the westerly direction? So, as you all know, previously, we tried to, we tried to pick. Uh, a tangent that we thought the wind was coming from that was impacting these, um, neighbors up there, and, um. And we weren't hitting the mark most of the time, so we decided to throw that out the door and just say, anything that's coming from the west. Will be the impacting level and not try and get too, too huge and dissecting where it should come from. And that was also justified by the data that we've looked at, that said, on the nights that they complained, they were coming from. You know, the west.
Okay.
And, and sorry, to add to that too, I mean, when we talked about the art of the possible, uh, you know, in, in the conversation, this, all of this is. Within the realm of possibility of things that we can do, uh, it's, the question, uh, becomes on the, on the financial side. But there was a willingness to, to, to work with us, um. Get these done, so.
Yeah, so I would propose that we talk, let's talk about, I, I, I mean, the board was pretty clear that. We thought the mitigation plan that was in place wasn't sufficient. And that we needed to look at something that would give greater relief. And we had some disagreement over. You know, what that would look like, and now we, we know what the financial impact of those consequence, of those, of those variables. So I, I, I would suggest we put flicker aside right now, because that's a separate kind of conversation. If that makes sense, and then, um, talk about what, um, what the impacts of. Of, of furthering, of expanding the mitigation program. And as, and Tony said, you know, it, it ranges from. Uh, uh, financial impact from, um, if we were to turn it off in, in the summer, when it's only blowing from the westerly, it's. You know, it's around seventy, seventy, around seventy-two thousand dollars. If we were to do a year-round, every, all night, every year, that's the other, that's the outpost, it's a three hundred thousand dollar expense to the town. Um. One of the things that I think we need to really be clear about is what. The authority is of our board to make, um. Changes to the financial impact of, or the, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to phrase it right at quarter eleven at night, but. Uh, is the, do we have the authority as a board to materially affect the financial. Impact of the operation of the wind turbine? Obviously, a prior board made the decision, um, to do a curtailment that we thought was going to run around, I believe the number was like around fifty grand. So I'm comfortable saying, yeah, we have that decision because it doesn't materially affect the finances of it. At three hundred thousand, what does that mean? Do we have that authority, and I don't know, you know, I've asked Jim to think about it, I don't know how we answer that question. Um, but I just want to throw that out there as something that we really need to, to understand, and we can't sign contracts for that much money. Without town approval. So, Jim, do you have any, or Ms. Connolly, has her hand up?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to say that these are the numbers that Situate Wind gave us, as what the impact to them would be. If I'm not.
To us. They're the impact to us.
But it, it hacked to us, but the point being that that is the number that would make them whole, is that right?
It is, yeah.
This is, this is contractually what we have to pay if we shut it off.
Right, in other words, Situate Wind is not suffering any financial consequences. It is strictly a consequence to the town.
Correct, but they have, they have no obligation in the contract to mitigate at all.
Well, I don't know that personally, I haven't, I'm not a lawyer, I've read the contract, but my point is, to be simple about it. That these are numbers that were generated by Situate Wind. This would be the cost to shut it down in various scenarios, and it would be up to the town to make it up. So, the question is, do we have the money to make it up?
Right, so there's two questions, do we have the money, do we have the money, and do we have, does this board have the authority to make that decision? I think there's two questions.
Well. I guess that's a Jim question, does, this would have to go to a town meeting, I assume, at least some of these scenarios, right?
Yeah, some of them would, I guess it's kind of a yes and no question, a board made a decision to put in a shut-off protocol earlier. And that shut-off protocol never went to town meeting, the board just approved it, uh, it did have a cost to the town, and we are doing that now. However, the cost of that shut-off protocol, or lack of a better way of putting it, is absorbed in the operating. Cost of the turbine, so between what we bring in and all that things. You'd never had to go out and get extra money from general fund revenue. So, as long as you're operating those parameters, I think you're, you're okay. When you start talking about large shut-offs that are not sustainable. That's going to require at some point that we're going to have to go out and get town funds to augment that, and I think that has to go to town meeting.
Right.
So in, under that theory.
Agreement with me?
To Mike?
Nancy.
Nancy?
Nancy's under a desk at this point.
No, I, I agree with Jim.
So in theory, if we were to say, you know what, we're going to just shut it off every night, all night long, whatever, it's three hundred grand, that's basically. Close, I mean, Nancy, correct me, that's close to the entire year's revenue for the town from this operation. Is that about right?
Yeah, it might be a little bit more.
It exceeds it.
It probably exceeds it, but it's, it's, it's in the ballpark of the, of, of what we generate as income for the town.
It wouldn't be sustainable for a long duration, but be sustainable for a, a short period of, a short number of years.
Yeah, so at some point, if we were to go to the, to the high bar, we would need to go seek additional funds, which would require town meeting.
Well, I, I think if you were going to go to the high bar, you would need to go to town meeting before you did it.
Right, that was my question, Jim, right.
We know, as Nancy just said, we know that shutting it down for the maximum amount of time. Is not sustainable within the revenue that we generate. So it will require town funding.
Right.
So I think before you just go and hand the town a bill and say, by the way, we made this decision. Year and a half ago, you need to come up with X amount of dollars. I think you need to go back and tell them, we want to do this, this is what it's going to cost, and the town's going to have to come up with it, I, I just.
I agree.
Well, because it's not only just supplementing, um, this lost revenue, but also, I mean, these costs, but also the lost revenue. From the operation that we're using to offset other costs, correct?
Right, so we voted at annual town meeting, I forget exactly what year, annual town meeting voted to use a hundred grand of. Revenue from this operation towards debt service for capital projects. That was an annual, that was a town meeting vote.
Actually, it wasn't.
It wasn't, oh, it was on my summary as an, oh, enlighten me, my summary said it was an, an annual town meeting.
When those projects were brought forward, it was a commitment, but it was not part of the vote.
Okay, all right, well, that's actually good news.
Been honored by financial forecasts since that vote was taken.
So.
That's, that's very good news.
One more follow-up question, so how much money is there currently in the revolving, or whatever account it is? That we put money from the turbine into?
Well, as of November's, oh, do you have that, Nancy? I have this, I have the September numbers, the closing balance as of September sixth. Which is obviously not the most current, was eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-six cents. So there's eight hun-
It, so is that, Nancy, is, or Jim, is that a usable resource to mitigate? If we decided to go ahead with whatever scenario?
The usable source, the only thing that the board would have to do would be to, uh, it's a fifty-three and a half revolving fund, so town meeting votes the amount of money that can be used annually, the board. Adjust that during the year with a simple vote.
Okay.
Wait, say that again, the vote, we can adjust the what with a simple vote?
So annually, town meeting spends, sets how much money can be spent out of the revolving, special kind of revolving funds, which this is one of them.
Yep.
The Board of Selectmen can vote to raise that limit during the year if there's a reason for it.
So typically, we've been, we've been allocating, we've been asked for a town meeting vote of a hundred thousand, because that was the. Um, not vote, but agreement, uh, expectation.
Not quite, our, our expenditure right now, five hundred thousand, because it's not only the hundred thousand that you just spoke about, but the money we have to pay to Situate Wind.
Okay, okay, so the net, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So is some of that eight hundred grand something we have to pay Situate Wind?
Yes, we pay them on a, um, a monthly basis, but we also take in revenue.
Right.
From national grid.
I mean, aside from, aside from the fact of whether we think we have the authority to do it. Town meeting voted to put up that wind turbine to generate revenue for the town. So, if we're going to go to, it's my opinion, if we're going to go to any extreme measure, we have to go to town meeting anyways, because it's the right thing to do. You know, whether, whether we want to justify whether we can or not. Uh, the town meeting expectation is for that thing to spin and that thing to make revenue. So, um. So I, I, I think regardless of whichever, of whom we choose, we're going to have to have a discussion as to whether that should happen regardless.
So, I mean.
Yep.
I guess I'll say, I mean, set for seven, even at the most extreme, seventeen hours of the day, it's still going to be spinning. We're talking about seven hours that it won't, and I understand there's still, um, a financial impact. However, um, it's not like it's being turned off all the time, we're talking just at night for seven hours every night. With that, um, you know, we, we, and this is, to me, the fact that we're starting with the money. I understand that, but I think we have to come to agreement how far we want to go, because I think that's going to help us dictate. We had, I was thrilled to hear about the voyage today, and how there seemed to be universally agreement. That nobody wants an entertainment license after eleven o'clock at night, and they have four houses around them. And I have a list of about thirty emails from people that were allowed to wake them up at eleven o'clock at night. I just want the residents to be treated the same as we did with the voyage earlier today, and I want them to be treated here. As well, and I understand there's going to be that, that impact, if we're talking about eight hundred thousand, we also have to think about the larger portion for the town. As the town, we're still going to be, it's a net positive, because of the, the money that we brought in for the years coming up with this. So if you're looking at the project as a whole, we're still making money. Um, making it up now, it's just, we're lessening how much we're making off of it going forward, so. To me, it's kind of like, how far do we want to push it, and then we can talk about financing.
Well, every one of the scenarios is going to shut that thing off at eleven o'clock at night, when it impacts these people. Every four, any one of the four scenarios that you're talking about. Right, and the other thing is, if one person complains about the Voyager being late, being loud late at night, then we change it.
Right.
So if one person calls up, and we've gotten letters that have said, hey, keep the tur- turbine on, that's what I voted for. You know, then we would not, we, we turn it back on.
The.
You know, if, if one person complains and says, the Voyager's loud at night, I don't want them open at eleven o'clock, we would trim it back to ten.
Here's, it's a philosophical point, if there's, there's only one business in the entire town that's allowed to operate and wake people up. We don't do it for the voyage, we don't do it for, for TKs, we don't do it for any other venue in a residential area, I don't understand why there's special treatment for this.
Do you live near the train?
I know, but there's revenue, but if, I don't care if Paul McCartney was playing at the Voyager every night, bringing in millions of dollars, we're not going to let it, let them stay open till two AM. Foxborough Stadium doesn't allow, uh, Paul McCartney to do that, Foxborough will shut them down, but we're going to let.
We're arguing about nothing, because every one of these scenarios shuts it off at eleven o'clock at night. Every single one of them, whatever one we choose.
For part of the year.
During the, for the part of the year that they complained about, and when the wind's blowing in the direction that, that's causing the issue.
So we have two cohorts in front of us, one is all year-round at night. Doesn't matter which way it's blowing, we have another that's all year-round. Westerly, which is where the vast majority of, of, um, complaints come from. The other two are summer-only, same, same parameters, summer, doesn't matter which way it's blowing, summer just westerly. So, so to Andrew's point is. If we're going to solve for finding relief for these people that are impacted by it. Do we limit it to summer? When the windows are open and people want to be outside and they want their windows open when they sleep? Do we, knowing, knowing that there are other impacts to the community, or do we say? Everybody should sleep every, I, I mean, I think Andrew's saying, doesn't matter, everybody should sleep every night, doesn't matter what time of year. Um, how does the rest of the board feel, I mean, is it? You know, I know we've got lots and lots of information about when the, when the complaints are. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that the majority of complaints are in the summer months, which is why the first, um, mitigation plan was for summer. But we all know that there, I mean, we got complaints this week from some folks that said, I, you know, it was loud. So it does, it does occur during the year, but the vast majority is, um, in the summer. Yes, Mara? Guys, just jump in, at this hour, I'm not going to acknowledge you, just jump in.
Okay, so, let's just, maybe, maybe we do. Let's take some things off the table here, in my mind, it's a constant battle over the definition of. Where, you know, where the wind is, what is the spit, the speed, and, you know, what is measured at what level, and what's being heard at a lower level, so. In my mind, I don't want to stick with just a westerly solution, because in my mind, the minute we. Pick just a westerly solution, it puts us at additional. I, I just, I think the conversation will just continue, because there will just be that ongoing debate. Um, and mistrust that we turned it off during westerly, where clearly that's where the data is. Because you never, you know, sometimes it may impact people when it's north, from the easterly, um, side, if you will, so. Those two scenarios for me. Solve a little bit, but. solve a little bit, but not enough, if you will. So I think we'll still be faced with complaints.
Do you think, yeah, it does, it makes total sense. Do you think it is sufficient, appropriate enough to turn it off at some, to propose doing a reduction on the summer months?
So what are we defining summer as again? Is it May through?
That's a really good question.
Let me look at it.
I think it's May through October.
May through October?
Okay, yeah, May, uh, May sixteenth to October fifteenth.
I mean, I would be inclined to do that in that way.
Three months, it's, it's.
The thing is off, right? It's off from eleven to six, we don't.
July, August, that's six months, so half of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Half of the year, May through October, six months in the evening regardless of the, of the, where the wind blows.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anyone else?
I, I don't understand why we would shut it off when the wind's blowing from the exact opposite direction that it does not impact them. Whether it's blowing at Widow's Walk, or it's blowing at my house, or it's blowing at the ocean.
But I think it's a constant debate, Tony, and that's.
There's no more winds, it doesn't matter what the wind, wind speed is. It doesn't even matter, I mean, common sense says the turbines pointing at them when it's coming anywhere from that direction. And, and evidence shows it. I've mapped every single day that they complained last summer. And we're really, we took a small bite and we're just missing it by a little bit. We've actually expanded it to half of the compass.
Right.
I think because winds not only shifts, but for one hour, they're going one way or two, half the night they're here, and then they're going the other way, then they come back. It's just, it's clarity, there's ease of understanding and knowing what we're doing. And again, it's, it's equitable like we do for any and all other businesses.
I, I like your point of clarity, I mean, that, that, that's exactly.
Couldn't be any clearer that if it's coming from the west, I mean, you can't be confused by west and east.
I'm not confused by it, nobody's confused by it, but I, I don't, while the majority of the disturbance may come from the west, there certainly are times that it does come from other points as well. And to Andrew's point, you know, what happens when the wind shifts in the middle of the night? It goes back on again.
When it comes from the east, it does, and when it comes from the west, it turns off.
I, I know what it does, it's, I mean, that was your question. Well, I, I agree with Andrew and Mara, I think that we just have to make it clear, it's shut off. How, whether it's half the year or the whole year, at night, it's shut off in whatever parameters. Because otherwise, we're just gonna keep getting, well, it was last night, or did.
Um, so, what about the summer versus year round?
I, I think if you want to shut it off year round, you have to go back to town meeting.
Town meeting, that's, that's my thought too.
I, I, I think whether we're required to or not, it's more, we really need to, to do that because it'd be significantly impacting a decision that was made by the entire community.
Well, so then this does become a question of, do, do we shut it off for the summer months all night long? And not have to take the risk of going to town meeting where who knows what will happen?
Correct, right.
I think we're gonna have to go to town meeting regardless. I think if we're gonna spend a hundred grand, but I think we could feel comfortable making the decision to do one of the lesser plans tonight. But regardless, I think we have to go to town meeting and say, hey, of the three hundred thousand dollars you thought you were gonna be getting from this turbine, we're cutting it in half or making it zero. Or, I'm sorry, a third.
Okay.
But I think we could, comfortable leaving the meeting today saying, hey, we're gonna shut it off in the summer um, if it's coming from the west or if it's coming from, from any direction. Cause that's about what we were, I mean, it's more than what we were talking about before, but.
Right, but it, it doesn't materially affect the finances of the contract. So I think, yeah, I mean, it's something that needs to be well-known, but I, I think, I agree with you, Tony, I, I think that.
Well, it does material, every one of them material impacts it.
It, it does.
We make two hundred and fifty grand off of it, which the town expects to get. And twenty, twenty-five percent of that, at the lowest cases, are gonna be impacted.
Right, but, you know, at our last meeting, we all decide, you know, we all discussed that we want to find a way to find, uh, you know, a mitigation plan that makes material in, you know, reduction of impact on the folks that are, I mean, that, that was, that was the charge that you guys had, is how do we make this happen so that we can reduce the impact on folks? Um, and my feeling is, you know, to, I, I think it was Karen's point, it's like, I would like to see to make a step to make it better as soon as possible. And if we wanna, if we have to wait to go to town meeting to make that kind of decision, we're kicking it down the road again. So, I would support, I mean, the vast majority of the complaints are in the summer. So in my mind, that's where we start. The financial impact is less. And then we can evaluate it, and if we need to go to town meeting for a larger mitigation, we have some time to do it. But in the meantime, we're taking a big chunk out of the impact of people, if that makes sense. And then we could talk about whether it's only summer or only westerly or, or every direction.
What, what, what's the number that people, I guess, are comfortable with? I mean, is it a hundred thousand? I mean, I'm, as you know, I'm comfortable with the three oh four, five sixty. But is it a hundred, is it two fifty, is it, I mean, what's?
Comfortable, do you mean, what do you think the threshold is that we need to go to town meeting? Tony's saying any, anything we need to.
Right, but what's the comment that we're willing to, to put towards this? To allocate? I mean, even if we go, so we, let's say we, we do, you did the summer, and then are we done? Or do we still want to go more?
Well, let's, let's finally get it from a practical timing standpoint, Andrew. It's not on your town meeting for the spring.
Right.
Right, and that ship has sailed because we're ready to close this up and get it all buttoned up. So if you voted to shut it off for the summertime, either westerly or completely, that's bringing you to October. We have a town meeting generally in November. So you're taking the largest portion of between now and then in shutting it off, and then you can still go back to town meeting to do more if the board wants to approach it that way. And I'm just looking at it from a date and time standpoint, as Karen said, it gives.
I know what you're saying, yeah.
And then if you wanted to shut it off more, you have, you know, a month, month and a half, October, November.
Say that didn't work.
Don't answer that, if you want to call it, and then you'd have a town meeting.
Yeah, and I think it's important to be clear that, Andrew, we don't have three hundred thousand dollars just sitting out there that we can easily reallocate. You know, we've, we've got tight operational budgets and we've, we've relied on part of this revenue, so we need to do some work to figure out what the impact is as well on the overall town operations to make sure we can support a full year-round eleven to six shutdown. I just, I think there's a little bit, I just want to make sure we all are clear on that too.
Well, I, I get that, and I totally appreciate that. I guess that's where the comfort, no, I know there's gonna be some work to try to find where we're making up, but that was my comfort level, like, how, how far do we want to go to find?
Well, the other thing that's gonna occur, if we go to town meeting and they vote not to shut the thing off, then it stays on.
Right.
And the whole discussion is over.
Right.
You know, or they could do the opposite and vote, you know, to shut it up at night year-round from any direction. If that's what we put before them.
Well, my question is, does this board, is there a threshold number that we could do now? I don't feel as reasonable to think we could do the three hundred. And town meeting is coming up, so that's gone. And if we decide we want to go to three hundred sometime over the next few months, we'd, we would have to go to town meeting in the fall to figure out how we're gonna fund that loss of revenue and ask the town to agree to do it. But do we have to go to town? Would we have the authority to authorize shutting it down all night during the summer with the ninety thousand dollar price tag? Could we use that revolving fund to fund that at least through No- November?
I, I believe that's what Jim's recommended, that, as advised, that we could do.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I mean, maybe we take that step and work on figuring out, did it work? Um, and if, if we get to the summertime, um, clearly, if we shut it down all night during this coming summer, by definition, we won't be getting any complaints. And, you know, I, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that even though I know we've gotten complaints during the winter months occasionally, people live in the flight path of Logan Airport. And I feel as though there may be some window-related issues that people, you know, could, could mitigate on their own during the winter months with windows that are properly acoustically, you know, whatever the word is, it's late. Um, so I think that's where I'm going with this. Karen, I would support that as well as the summer shutdown all dir, multi, all directional, omnidirectional, how do you like that for a word?
That's a ten dollar word.
Isn't it, at eleven fifteen at night? Not bad.
Uh, Andrew, what do you think about that as, as a practical timeline approach?
I'm, I'm mulling it over, yeah, I mean, so we're trying to get, so it would start in May?
May to October.
I mean, we could.
Shut down at night, bum.
So this is like, like, almost like a test pilot to see if this, this works. It's too bad we couldn't start in March. But even if we tried just a westerly in March, just to get something, Tony, what do you think?
I'll do the westerly the whole time.
Just in March?
I'd do the westerly. I, I, it makes no sense to do it when it comes from the east. I don't know how you guys are saying to do that. It makes absolutely no sense to me. I, I think Mr. Darty would, would agree that he's never been woken up on a storm with a wind blowing from the east.
If you're gonna call him out, you're gonna ask, if done, mute him. Um.
But, yeah, so it's why, whenever the, the first date is, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, not sure.
No, 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 it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's, uh, you know, we are in agreement that we want to find relief. And now we're just talking about the, how to make that happen. So, yeah, I hadn't, Andrew hadn't thought about the timeframe. I mean, obviously, all of this is just, you know, we needed information from which to make informed decisions. But, uh, you know, there's nothing to preclude saying, well, you know, let's do it, do it differently, just, it will cost more money. And so that, you know, there's, there's the rub. You know, anytime we expand the definition, the cost goes up and then do we come up to the place? And I, I don't want it to become down to money, I just want it to be as most impactful as possible. And that's, that's my personal feel, you know, feeling.
Well, you can't ignore the money. That's what we're, that's what the town elected us for, you know?
No, no, you can't.
That's part of, part of our job is to pay attention to the financial aspect of the taxpayers.
Hundred percent agree. Right, we have to do that, we have to look at expectations. But we made a commitment that we wanted to find a mitigation plan that made sense. So if I'm hearing this correctly, we seem to have a consensus that we should shut it down in the summer months at night. Mr. Vignani thinks it should only be westerly and the rest of us are crazy. I think that's a good summary. And.
I'll say tired.
Tired, no, I mean, you, your point's.
I don't think I would change my opinion even if it were seven PM.
Yeah, I mean, your point's valid that by far the majority of complaints are when the wind's blowing from western direction. And if we expand the compass from, you know, this is what we had from mitigation before, and we go to this, it's bound to be better. However, you know, there's a lot of variables and factors. And, um, I think that Ms. Kern and Ms. Conley articulated that, you know, for the spread to do it all summer from any direction, it's worth it. I, and please correct me if, if I'm not summarizing correctly. Mr. Goodrich, I think, would support that as well because he'd like it up all the time. So, I'm hearing that the majority of this group is in favor of a summer-wide shutdown all direction.
That somebody needs to make a motion.
Tony's not duly noted. And that we are fairly comfortable that that is within our authority. That we're comfortable that that's within our authority based on our town administrator's advice.
Well, based on what's been done in the past, too.
And what's been done in the past. It's, it's double what was the expectation before. And, and honestly, these are estimates, you know, we won't know until it's done. Um, and that anything beyond that, we need to really go and have a conversation with our community at town meeting. Did I summarize that?
Yes.
Anyone want to add or subtract? Okay. Um, well, that's significant. I, my dissenter is fuming, I can see that.
I'm not fuming.
You know, that's why we have five board members, right?
I, I want to help this too, I, believe it or not, I've been the, the guy doing this the longest, trying to find some sort of resolution. But logic is logic and part of our decision is illogical to me. Um, and I think, I think we have to think about any of the decisions that we make, whether we have to go to town meeting and talk to them. And I, I don't know the answer to that right now, even if we take the lowest of the, of the four.
If we were, I mean, I have full confidence in our town administrator. But I mean, I don't think this is a, I don't think it's a counsel question. I mean, how, I mean, if we wanted to explore just sort of the, you know, the, the wonkiness of what our authority is, how do we do that beyond Jim?
Well, I think we have to, well, this is probably for another, another.
Yes.
Meeting.
It is.
Okay. But it's important because it's, I think, you know, I don't, I really don't want to overstep our authority. Okay, so then the other piece of this is we asked them to explore reducing a flicker, uh, which, you know, profoundly affects the butters and, you know, on occasion affects others. So I personally was very surprised at the estimates on this, um, which was almost sixty thousand dollars a year. Because from what we were told, I thought that, you know, the number of hours wasn't significant. So I was, I would wonder if you guys could give us a little more, did you get more insight on that? Cause I was surprised by that number.
I, I was shocked by it as well. They say that it only impacts, you know, the McKeever's house is the house that it impacts, you know, ninety-nine percent of it. And it impacts it, they say fifty hours a year. Um, and that's assuming that the wind's blowing hard enough and the sun's shining on, on all fifty hours. And it's for ranging from like twenty minutes to eighty-seven minutes, I think it was, a day in the fall and early winter. So to me, that seemed like a much more manageable, you know, a much smaller time period. smaller time period to shut it off. I emailed them back this morning and asked them to double check that because it just didn't look right to me.
Right, I mean, it's.
And I would think with that sort of money, we could find some other means, means of mitigation and means of, you know, helping out the McKeever's household over there.
Yeah, it just, it didn't, it just didn't sound right to me because it's in, I mean, the prior conversations, it seemed like a no-brainer. You know, it's like, it's not a lot of hours program it. It's a hard, what is it, the expression, soft turn off or whatever? You know, I'm 100% in favor of doing a flicker turn off, but I don't trust those numbers and I, I, I really think we need to to exploit. So thank you for reaching out to them because that does not make sense to me. Um, does anyone else have on the, on that topic? I'm just concerned that if we were to, to discuss, if we were going to make a decision about that tonight, we don't have the facts. I, I, I feel like we don't have the facts.
I don't know. I, I think we should also get together with that family and pursue other, if it's going to be a big number like this, pursue alternative means of dealing with that.
Right.
So I, I see Mr. McKeever on the call right now, so, you know, I think we need to get together with him and his family and figure out what else we can do for, you know, some large amount of, some, some substantial amount of money per year.
Yeah, so, yeah, Mr. McKeever, I see you're on the call and, um, I don't want to, I mean, I want to be respectful of privacy, so I don't want to have this in an open meeting or, um, but, you know, um, yeah, it's your level of comfort, but I, you know, we, we, I have met personally with the family and we've discussed different mitigations and I'm am looking for some guidance from the family of what will work for them because they're obviously in a very unique situation. Um, so not sure how to proceed on that, but I would, you know, welcome any impact, any impact. I can't even talk anymore, any input from them directly.
Mr. McKeever, would you, would you be up for meeting with, with one or two of us to try and figure out what we can do here?
Ask you to join the, hold on, I gotta do the computer thing. I don't know, Seth has to.
You should be good. Mark, you should be good.
Hi, Mark.
Hello there. Um, I, I would love to get down and talk, uh, you know, uh, it's been a long eight years for this thing spinning and, you know, you know, I, I like the idea of the, the shutdown in the summertime, but, you know, me being who I am, well, what about the wintertime, you know what I mean? But to answer your question, Tony, if, if we need to set up a meeting or whatnot, um, I'm all ears.
Well, we'll, we'll reach out to you and set up a time like very quickly, like this weekend and get together and talk.
I mean, it's going to be tough with football and whatnot, but again, I'm, I'm, it's usually in the mornings on Saturdays, so, you know, Saturday afternoon or, you know, uh,
Yeah, you look at your calendar and, and find some times and we'll make it, you know, make it work.
I'd say I'm all ears. Any, anytime after, you know, Saturday, the JV usually plays and stuff, so it's, you know, it's, I, I, we would make, I would make some time.
Great. Okay. So, um, are you okay with us not going, doing, making a decision tonight about the flicker until we have a conversation? Because I, I think that we've got some questions here.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it, what's another couple of days? I mean, the sun's, it, it's not going away, but it's, the sun is at the, the peak now that it's starting to move away from that, so, you know, it's neither here nor there is right now. I just, you know, I'm grateful that we're moving in the right direction and, you know, um, I, I just, I wish this would just go away.
Okay.
We'll get together this weekend.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us back to the mitigation plan that, oh, Ms., Mr. Darty has his hand up. Um, I will ask to unmute you.
Should be good.
Yeah, I, I didn't ask for addresses, but I'm pretty sure Lorraine can figure this out.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping to put Tony's thoughts at rest for him. When he said, uh, the wind direction shouldn't be considered at all, you should be looking at it around, around the compass. You have people that are affected by it when it does blow from the east. There are three people over at, uh, at the landing, Paul McSorley, Pat Shea, and Bill Mozagel. And Mark McKeever you just spoke to, it doesn't matter what direction it's blowing from. When you're that close, 640 feet, you hear it. You either hear the turbine or the, the AM. So I, I think looking at, at wind direction is not the way to go because you're, you're, you're still going to, you're going to get, sure you may get most of them from one direction, but you're still going to get all of them. And, and as Mr. Goodrich said, it's about the individuals and the people. You know, so it's got to be a total shutdown. You can't look at the wind direction. That's.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
But I'm sure, do you want to motion?
You know, that would be lovely. Thank you, Ms. Kern.
I move to propose shutting down the wind turbine for the summer season from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, um, from all directions, all wind directions.
There is a motion from Ms. Kern. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Conley. Um, I do want to pause before we say any further discussion. I, I did address the two gentlemen that were off video, but there are 16 participants. So if there's somebody who isn't on video that wanted to comment on this, um, you know, now's an opportunity before we vote. I just realized that that probably wasn't good to do that. Uh, we got, we have clapping hands. Love that emotion. All right, so we have a motion. We have one clapping hand. No, no one wants to address, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further conversation?
Do we need to define summer in the motion or are we set on that based on that condition of?
It would be wise to say, you know, the dates, which I believe we were saying was May, what did I say? May fifteenth, sixteenth? May 16th to October 15th? That was, that was the parameter. So amended? So amended? Any objection, Ms. Conley?
No.
Um, we have a motion, uh, and this vote, would we require a roll call vote?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
No.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
And Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion carries 4-1. The wind turbine will be shut down summer months, May 15th to October 16th, from 11:00 PM to 6:00 PM. 6:00 AM, sorry. Um, and that we would instruct the town administrator to work with wind turbine to work that out. Mr. Vignani, I will task you with coordinating with Mr. McKeever about a follow-up meeting regarding the impact on his particular property. And, um, I believe that concludes our discussion for this evening on this topic. Am I, any, any objections to, uh, Mr. I do see Mr. Darty's hand up. Not surprised. Oh, wait, I just muted you, not on purpose. Sorry, hold on, okay.
Well, I'm a little confused. Did I hear you earlier that you're going to take this as a test pilot program, that if you don't get any complaints during the summer months, you would then try to extend it year round? Did I hear you say that?
No, what we voted was simply for the summer, but what we noted on the timeline, Mr. Redrow noted was that if we were going to do it year round, the board really feels that, and I, I think I speak for the whole board, that the financial impact on the town would be significant enough that we would need to get town meeting approval. Um, and that as we watch it over the summer, we can continue the conversations. And should that be something the board wanted to do, and it's not at all a done deal, we would have time to bring it to the November town meeting. But we didn't think we had the authority to do that now.
That was my point. Perhaps you rather move to put a motion in there that you put that and consider it in seeing that if you get zero responses or complaints during the summer months, you will then go into town meeting to see if you can get the monies to extend it year round. Rather than not having a motion, I would love to see something made, uh, that you intend to bring it up.
Well, what is, is prepared to, to promise to make a promise? Um, you know, I, I'm seeing shaking heads.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, I, I, I see your point, Mr. Darty, and I, I hope that you, you, because of our diligence, um, and getting to this point, you'll know that we're not just going to go and walk away.
All right, I get it. Every two weeks, I gotta walk.
I know, well, we would miss you, so.
But, but I also want to be clear that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, honestly, I mean, I, I will hearken back to earlier this evening when we were talking about the water resources bylaw change, where they very strenuously argued that we should put in a recommend, you know, in the bylaws, if you've got a well, we don't, we can't make you, but we think you shouldn't use your well when everybody else is. It, it, it didn't, it didn't, it wasn't impactful and it wasn't appropriate for a bylaw. And I think having a vote to look at this down the road isn't, isn't appropriate at this time. That's my feeling. But we are duly noting it.
But I want to make sure too that this isn't a test pilot. You know, we just voted to turn it off during the summer months between 11:00 and 6:00.
Right.
Yeah. Not testing anything, we're not coming back to reevaluate it, we're shutting it off.
Right, we're not.
Because I saw you have some discussion along that line that I heard.
Yeah. Yeah, no, but I just want to be clear because I think along the way, things have gotten misconstrued and I just want to make sure we're all clear.
Right. That we've made this decision to turn it off in the summer. All right, thank you, Ms. Kern. I'm losing clarity at 11:30 at night myself.
I've lost it.
You're doing quite well. Sick dog and all. Um, all right, so, uh, great, then we will move on to the other agenda items and hopefully get this done before tomorrow. Uh, thank you, everybody, for staying up late with us. Um, our next item is, oh, we have drain layer, didn't we just do drain layer renewals? But yes, they are.
Get them all the time.
Oh, there's one more, there's one more. Uh, do I have a motion? Um, for a, there's one drain layer license renewal.
Move to approve a renew, renewal of a drain layers license to the following business, TruX.
Moved by Ms. Conley, is there a second by Ms. Kern? Is any further discussion about drain layers? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, the motion passes 5-0. On other business, we have liaison reports. Does anyone have, um, anything that they'd like to relate to the board?
Um, no, actually, I'll just say quickly, Karen, can we take a look at April 6th for a date for the DEI committee to come before us, um, with their first quarterly update?
Oh, we look forward to that.
So if you guys can make a note and see, yeah.
Yeah, Lorraine, could you put that on the agenda? And while we're on agendas, can we just always put at 9:30 bathroom break on our agendas? Going forward? Um, any, or just break, that'd be fine. Are there any other, um, uh, reports, liaison reports? Okay. Um, I will just note that the Council on Aging, um, made a magnificent hire for new transportation director. Um, Ms. Anne Gifford, I know so because I worked with her prior, in a prior life, and so that's very exciting for the town. Um, if there are no other liaison reports, correspondence, I took one off your plate, Madam Clerk, but are there others?
Number one, a very complimentary letter to all involved in Cedar Point, so that was nice to get from the Cedar Point people. We did receive another update from Plymouth County Cares. I'm not sure that the, that the number has budged for us at this point. It, it seems pretty close to what it was.
Nancy's rolling her eyes and shaking her head.
One point, it's about 1.6. I think it was around there. At any rate, so quickly, um, we received an extremely long memo from the Administration and Finance Federal Funds Office from the, um, the Commonwealth. And it is multi-page. Uh, I'm sure that Nancy and Jim are totally on it. Um, they're extending some deadlines for applying for various funds. They're, they're, they're increasing uh, the amount of money that they're allocating to, I think it's rental assistance. At any rate, it's extremely long and I'm not going to even summarize it, but we received it and that was it, I believe.
Great, thank you. Uh, the next item is an approval of minutes for prior meetings. Do we have a motion? Or do, are there any changes? If not, we have a motion.
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selective Meeting held on February 9th, 2021, and move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the Board of Selective Meeting held on February 9th, 2021, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Moved by Ms. Conley, second by Ms. Kern. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, motion carries 5-0. Uh, last item on our agenda is adjournment, um, and we do have um, very important bond documents to sign tomorrow. Um, I, I am not available tomorrow, so I'm going to need to coordinate with, uh, Jim and Lorraine about that. Is everyone else available to come in and sign those documents?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, then I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by everyone. Um, is there a roll call vote?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everyone, very much for your
goal today.
to our community and your diligence to this effort.